I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 6:02 PM on June 8th, 2020. All members of the Barrington Town Council are present. It looks like many of us here have become somewhat veterans of the Zoom meeting. I see a lot of people who've muted themselves, and I appreciate that. By way of kind of mechanics for the meeting, if we could keep ourselves muted until you have something that you want to say, if you're on video and you want to have something to say, if you kind of raise your hand, I'll be able to see you. There is a way to do it, and I'll pay attention to that. There's a way to do it, but if you just raise your hand, I'll do that. If we call for a time of comment and you're on the phone and would like to participate, I'm afraid you're just going to have to call out, and we will try to accommodate everyone. We have a very long meeting tonight. We have a lot of really important issues, many of them related to COVID-19. Not all of them, but it's going to take us some time to get through, and we need to have some thoughtful discussion on it. So I'm going to try and be as efficient as I can with this, and I appreciate it if you bear with me. Before we begin, though, I would ask that you all join me in a moment of silence for George Floyd and all victims of violence and their families, and also for the folks who've died from coronavirus and their families. The first item we have on the agenda, I would ask that we dispense with the pledge. My flag is two floors down, so until we're back in meetings where we all have the flag to pledge allegiance to, I think we'll dispense with that. The next item is announcements, and I would ask our town manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through those announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing I'd like to announce is that the Committee on Appropriations meeting, if you're looking at the agenda, was originally scheduled for tomorrow evening, Tuesday evening, the 9th at 7:00 PM. Due to a technical error, we've had to reschedule that meeting, and it is now going to be on Thursday -- I'm sorry, Mary's nodding her head -- Wednesday. I'm getting my meetings confused. Parks and Rec is Thursday. It will be on Wednesday, June 10th at 7:00 PM, and there'll be a new agenda posted with a new Zoom link for that meeting. And there will be a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting via Zoom on Thursday evening at 7:00 PM, and that agenda will also be posted with a connection, a Zoom connection. Want to remind our residents that the census is still going on. It's extremely important that we, as a community, Barrington had the highest participation rate, the last I saw. We'd like to continue that, and those that haven't yet, it's a five-minute process, and it will help our state immensely when it comes to federal funding, as well as potentially our congressional representation. So if you haven't participated in the census yet, please do that. Just a quick update on COVID-19. As most of you have probably heard, we are in Phase 2. That means that all businesses are reopened. There are many restrictions. You can go to the reopeningri.com website, and it has all the restrictions by business and by area, be it sports and recreation or businesses, retail. It will give you all the details on that. But Phase 2 is open. Restaurants are limited to 50% of their capacity indoors without additional restrictions, and I encourage all Barrington residents to support Barrington businesses, including our restaurants. Playgrounds and basketball courts remain closed. We're hoping to get the playgrounds open soon. Rhode Island Department of Health informed us today that they are looking at options right now, so hopefully we will get that open. Youth and adult sports are open for cohort groups of 15, stable cohort groups. The Department of Health is not recommending any inter-team play as of yet. With all that said, the statistics are outstanding. We're below 5% positive test rate. We've been below 3% for most of the weekend. We are the highest-tested state in the nation, with over 15% of our population being tested, and the governor has a plan to test more people, including asymptomatic people, to allow us to try and trace hotspots and get relief to them as quickly as possible and get them quarantined so they don't spread. So the COVID fight is going well. Phase 3 reopening. The governor has spoken about July 1st as being a target date. That could move either left or right depending on how we're doing with our testing protocols. And on Friday, July 17th, at 7:00 PM, Barrington and Warren will be having a town hall with Senator Whitehouse, and we're asking for questions for the senator, and we're asking for as many residents to participate as possible. We'll continue to promote that up until that date, but that's Friday, July 17th at 7:00 PM, from 7 to 8. Did I miss another date?
Isn't it June, June 17th?
No, I believe it's July. I will check on that as soon as I'm done.
Okay. You're probably right.
Wait, did age one, probably not.
I thought we just moved it to one week.
It is. I'm looking at the email we received today. It says June 17th.
June 17th? Because it was going to be on a Friday night.
Wednesday, June 17th, 7:00 PM.
Okay, I apologize for that.
And that's a Wednesday.
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to thank everyone that helped in the organization and the safe conduct of our Black Lives Matter demonstration on Sunday at 1 o'clock. Barrington Congressional Church organized the event. They expected under 100 people. We ended up with 1,200 people out there, and for those that participated, it was an absolutely wonderful event of community coming together in support of the Black Lives Matter movement. I'd like to thank the Police Department for being there for everyone's safety, as well as the Fire Department for having an extra rescue onboard, and for all those to help organize it. So thank you very much for that, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you very much. Continuing on that same topic, really, the Black Lives Matter movement. All of us were disturbed by George Floyd's death, or I should say murder, and it's caused a lot of anxiety, and there've been enormous movements. I have every confidence in our Police Department because I know of the professionalism of our department, but I wanted to make sure that everyone else could have an opportunity to hear about our Police Department and how we do things here and how we take professionalism and all of those things very seriously. So I've asked if our chief, Dino DiCrottenzo, could come and speak to us briefly at this time. Chief?
Can you hear me, Mike? I just unmuted.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I had a little delay in there. That's better. First of all, I'd just like to comment on behalf of the men and women of the Barrington Police Department. We cannot comprehend the egregious actions and inaction on the part of the officers that were involved in the incident leading up to the death of George Floyd. I don't know what else to say other than it pretty much left us speechless, which is not what we want today, speechless. We need to, you know, talk out in support of what changes are needed, but I just wanted to say that right off the start. And in response to the question of what we do as a Police Department, or what we have been doing, or what we'll do from here forward, with reference to training, professional development, and any other necessary steps that we take in light of the recent events, I can say this. There are a number of things that I believe collectively are important when it comes to the issue at hand, and I'll start with trainings because I see that listed on the agenda. And I had to -- the amount of trainings we do, when you see the list, is actually surprising. You don't know how we fit them all in, but I picked out some of the important ones as it pertains to this issue. And we have annual ethics trainings, non-biased-based policing training, unconscious biases, that's part of the non-biased-based policing training. We have diversity training, de-escalation trainings, very important today, mental health trainings of all sorts. We just had an eight-hour mandatory that was set by the state. That was a full day dealing with mentally ill. I mean, that's all races, obviously, but I think that's a critical aspect, very dangerous dealing with, you know, mental health individuals. Protective custody training, community care doctrine becomes important, search and seizure, less lethal trainings, of course. We have the pepper spray that we carry, the tasers and the batons, and I know that sounds, just like when we were first going to carry tasers, people thought that was horrible, but it actually saves lives. You know, I wish we had tasers years ago. There's people whose lives have been taken when you didn't have any other course of action. That's a less lethal action, and, you know, it's a five-second thing. I'm not saying it's pleasant, but I'll tell you, at least it's much better than taking someone's life. So taser training, con training is very important, CPR and AED training, and of course, use of force training is very important. We have shoot-don't-shoot, de-escalation trainings using the, what they call the FAT simulator, firearms training simulator that's loaned out to every department in the state by the Interlocal Trust. We've had law enforcement diffusion strategies training, of course, legal updates, which is current case laws annually. Those change so often, they're very difficult to keep up with, so we'll do an annual on that with the Attorney General's Office. We've actually sent officers to police mediation training, which is a new concept. Years ago, you wouldn't see that. We also have, which has been a successful program, a 52-week training program that's called the Path of the Guardian, and that is taught by an attorney at a law office that is very, very experienced in nationwide training of police officers. The attorney that does the training also has some law enforcement experience. So what we do with that is 52 topics, so we do one a week, and it's about a 30-minute training, and the officers sign off on those trainings after they watch. It's about a 30-minute training on each topic. They're very -- 30 minutes are very intense, though. They're very informative, and it's been very accepted by our officers. We've been doing that for a couple of years now, and we are just actually checking into the third year now with that company. And those 52 topics, you can only imagine, very much on point with the events that we're talking about in the nation over the last few months, actually years, right? But very on point with bias-based policing, non-bias, I should say, and all the other trains that I mentioned. So not only do we do trainings, you know, in person, we follow it up with those 52-week topics every week because you have to stay on it. Like I said, there's so much training. And the next thing I'd like to talk about is the fact that we're state accredited, and I'll try to be as quick as possible. I know we're out of time limits, but this is very important to stress. With those trainings, state accreditation, because of our state accreditation, we have 113 formal written policies. Those policies are anywhere from five to 10 pages normally, but our high-risk policies like use-of-force policy, pursuits, search and seizure, they'll be anywhere from 10 to 14 pages in length. We have about 90 sections of our rules and regulations that our officers have to comply with also in our handbook. And because of state accreditation, we must meet around 600 industry standards or best practices, and that's critical because right on point with something like we're talking about tonight as an example, and I can't go over the 600, but one of them is you have to do a use-of-force report. Anytime any minimal force is used, an officer has to complete what we call a use-of-force report. That report is completed immediately and turned over to the supervisor on duty. That's reviewed by the supervisor and then reviewed by the patrol. That's forwarded from the supervisor to a lieutenant or a captain, patrol commander, and then it's reviewed by him or her. After that, it's also reviewed by the chief, and then there's a very descriptive annual analysis of all those use-of-force reports that are completed. That's one of the requirements that state accreditation requires, and that's why I bring it up, and there's so many others that's important. And in light of what happened, being state accredited, we have a panel of Rhode Island Commission on Police Standards and Training, and Rhode Island Police Accreditation Commission will be reviewing, you know, and be involved in any discussions of change and adding standards as they deem necessary based on what happened recently, any recent events. And with that said, any changes that will be forced upon us, we'll have to comply to remain state accredited, so that helps out with when we're going through any changes like we're currently going to go through based on what has happened recently. And the third thing I'd like to talk about is something I published an article in, and I know I gave the council a copy of it last night. It can be found by those that are listening in the public on the FBI website online and in their journals. It's a professional research journal. I published an article back. It's been a while, but it's still current today, and the title of the article is "Early Detection of the Problem Officer," and it deals with what we call early intervention systems or early warning systems. And those early warning systems are very critical, and what they do, it's basically a database that we do have in Barrington. We've had it for a few years now. I was one of the big proponents, pushed for it, chief across, of, you know, just absolutely purchased it at our request, and he was a big proponent of it as well. But that database, what that has is a lot of information we put into it, and training grievances, any truthfulness issues, any false arrest claims against that officer. We track resisting arrest incidents, assaults on officers. Signs kind of odd, but what we find is some officers always, for whatever reason, be assaulted, and it becomes a red flag after a while, or obstruction of officer arrest and disorderly conduct arrests made by officers. It goes on and on the list. I can't go over the whole list, but individually, those issues may not mean anything, but in totality, when you put it all together, sometimes it's a sign that there may be a problem with an officer. So we do have that. Not all departments have it, but we do have that database, and I think that's another critical aspect in what we're dealing with today. One of the four now. So the fourth thing I'd like to talk about is, with all that said, it's important to recruit and hire the right people. You know, you can train all you want. Obviously, you can put all the policies into effect, and we saw what happened. I think it just goes down to the way some people are brought up. That's obvious. I think we all realize that. So we need to hire the people with the proper attitude, beliefs, and values that are needed in order to be successful in this career, in any career, but especially in law enforcement. We do an intense background check. I think people need to know that. There's actually nine pages. We have very, very personal questions. I won't get into the questions, but it's very hard to get away from some of them, and it's hard to hide some things. We dig it out of you. We'll visit high schools, neighborhoods, past and present high school teachers, and as you can see, as most recent, somebody from Barrington who had some posting on social media. We look at those, and there's a reason for that. I mean, I've been told in the past, you know, how could you didn't hire this person? They just had something, they had a little mess up in high school. All those times, that little mess up in high school makes a difference in this, in our search, and we will not hire you. We have a written test, the psych test, like every other department, psych test. There's not only a six-hour psych test, but a psych interview, and I think the advantage we have when it comes to recruiting, and although most, 87% of the police departments in the nation are 25 officers or less in the country, if you can believe that, so we're actually the majority of the police departments. But a department our size, what I find is, I've been involved with the recruiting for a while, we hire one to two at a time, and I think that is very an advantage we have. You have 100 applicants, we only have to hire one, sometimes two, and it makes us, we can be so selective, and that's why sometimes that high school mistake or mishap, whatever you want to term it, comes down to affect them, and we don't hire that person because we can be selective, only from a sheer number standpoint because we only need that one or two persons. With that said, we also need to, in recruiting, and we, not like we haven't tried, I know Human Resources Director, we pulled her in as soon as we could to help us out with recruiting, you know, diverse candidates. It's difficult, but I recently, as of last week, with everything going on, I contacted Rhode Island Gotti, and some people may not even know that organization, but they're an organization that bridges the gap between the minority community and law enforcement, and the president of that group is actually a friend of mine, a retired minority officer out of the state police in Rhode Island, and he was so happy to hear from me, and we talked about, I didn't realize, I called him for training, additional training, obviously, and in the conversation, I learned that they can't help with recruiting minority applicants, so we're going to talk to him again about that and bring in some trainers. And like I said, even though we train all the time on the non-biased-based policing or racial training, you know, racial, race relations, it's always good to get different speakers. There's some dynamic speakers out there, and there's some that aren't as good, so we always try to pull on different organizations. I also contacted the Rhode Island Commission on Prejudice and Bias, and I had an email with Jody Glass, I believe her name is, and she's going to get back to me this week as well. And I think all those collectively have something to do with what we're looking, you know, how we in Barrington and any other police force need to try to hire the right people in hopes of never having an event like what occurred recently happen here. And I looked over some of our use-of-force stats, and I'll end quickly here, but the last time we had a person die in our custody as a result of a use-of-force incident was all those two. There's one in 1997 or 98. It was a shooting, but the resident was from Barrington, had left the house with a gun, and the family was very concerned, was very distraught, and they knew something, you know, something not good was going to happen. We ended up finding that person from Barrington on the, about 1,000 feet from the Barrington-East Province line. Unfortunately, that person pulled the gun on our officer plus a couple of East Province police officers in 1997, 98, about 22 years ago, and unfortunately, he pulled the gun, pointed at the officers, and they fired, and he was subsequently shot and killed. That actually happened 1,000 feet over our line in East Province, and the actual striking officer was somebody from East Province. Our officer never struck the target. And in 1984, we had, was the last one I remember, so that was 38 years, 36 years ago or so, and it was a bank robber that was shot and killed by a Barrington police officer on County Road, or just behind County Road. That person had robbed the bank, had a gun, and he was ultimately shot. Those are two justified unfortunate events, justified killings, but, so we don't have those, thankfully, you know, dying as a result of use of force in Barrington, other than those two that I told you over the last 36 years. And we're willing to work, and we're going to work. Like I said, we already contacted some agencies. Tomorrow, all the chiefs in the state are actually talking with Rhode Island Commission on Prejudice and Bias, and I hope that helps and somewhat explains what we can do, and we have a lot more to do. There's no doubt about that.
Thank you very much, chief. Before we move on, I just want to say that this is the beginning of a conversation, not the end of it. In the coming weeks and months, I hope to call a special meeting or special meetings of our town council to discuss these issues in more detail and have comment from the public. But before we move on to the next item, does anyone have anything very briefly they'd like to say to chief or ask a question? Okay, I'm seeing none. Thank you. Thank you again, chief. We'll move on to the next set of items. This is the consent agenda. It's what we call our consent agenda. These are matters that are considered routine by the Barrington Town Council, and they're typically enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen files requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda, and we'll vote on the remaining items and then consider that item in the normal sequence on the agenda. Having said that, does anyone on the council have anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Would anyone from the public like to ask that anything be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Okay, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda, accept and adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilor Boyager and seconded by Vice President Weymouth. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Boyager?
Aye.
Councilor Brier?
Aye.
Councilor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Bristol County Water Authority Monthly Report, and I think I saw, did I see Chairman Klepper? Let me see. Is there anyone from the Bristol County Water Authority? Okay, did anyone have any questions about the report? Okay, we don't need to adopt that or accept that, so we can move on. Next item on the agenda is the public comment. This is a two-minute statement. This is for the public. To speak regarding a topic that's not already on the agenda, please indicate that you'd like to speak by raising your hand. When you're recognized, I will call on you. I'm going to start with the people I can see on video first, and then I'll see if there's anyone who, anyone else who'd like to be heard, and then state your name and address for the record. Would anyone from the public like to be heard? Okay, I don't see anyone, but let me just check the screen. I don't see anyone raising their hand. Would anyone who's on the telephone like to be heard? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on. The next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on proposed charter changes. There are two that are new here, and there are three that we've already discussed. The first one that's new is--
Assistant Al, excuse me. We missed item number 17, if you want to go back.
I apologize. Let me back up. So item 17 is to discuss and act on approval of town council contingency funds to pay the bill for the Little League fireworks celebration of last year in September. I had some trouble actually seeing the item, but I did see the manager's memo on it, so does anyone have any questions about that? Councilor Brier?
Yes, I recall when we met shortly before the event, we discussed doing something possibly with matching the funds raised by the community is what the council would do and that the balance of funds would come from the Parks and Rec budget. I don't know where that budget is with everything going on, but I know we had set the council contingency fund so that we'd kind of be refilling up to that cap. That doesn't happen with the Parks and Rec budget, so if my recollection was correct that we intended to fund part of this with Parks and Rec, would it save a little money if we did continue to fund it from there and only fund that matched portion from the contingency?
Jim?
Right now, there was $1,400 in donations from several families in town, as well as Ocean Point Insurance, the Barrington Business Association, and I believe one of the banks, and I can't, I apologize for not remembering. So we have $1,400 in donations, which means it's, there's $3,600 outstanding. With the end of the fiscal year coming, the council contingency has a balance of $6,925. I would just as soon use the council contingency since I-- I would just assume use the council contingency since I think you're going to have plenty to last year, the next three weeks and save the money in the Parks and Rec fund. I don't recall that conversation, but if, if you want it out of Parks and Recs, I'm sure there's, out of the field maintenance fund or out of somewhere in Parks and Rec, there's money there.
Counselor Brier, I guess I didn't understand what you meant. Could you explain that again? I remember we had discussions about this last year now that you mention it, but what do you mean if that could save a little money?
So I know going into last year's FTM, we switched the type of fund that the council contingency fund is. So as it gets depleted each year, it would be refilled to a certain cap. Is that correct recollection? So, so if we spend the money from that fund now, we have to replenish it next month. If we don't spend it, we don't have to replenish it. We don't replenish the Parks and Rec fund. It's a whole new budget. And so granted, it's not a lot of money we're talking about, but if there is money remaining in the Parks and Rec budget that it doesn't need for the next 22 days, if we spend, if we cover this bill with those funds, then we, we keep a larger balance in the contingency fund, which means fewer dollars go into that bucket next year.
Well, I just want to clarify that the, the field maintenance fund is also a, Kathy, forgive me, what is the term? It's not a rolling fund.
That's also like an assigned fund as well.
Okay, it's an assigned fund. So that one also, if, if the money isn't spent, it doesn't go to the, the general fund. It remains with that in the same way that the contingency fund does. But in terms of the Parks and Rec, the remaining Parks and Rec funds, I don't, in the, the total budget, not including the field fees, do you know how much is in there, Jim? Or Kathy, do you know how much is left in that, in Parks and Rec for the remainder of the year?
As of the report that we have right now, there's 77% that has been spent. But if you look at the line items, contractual services is already over budget. The other is salaries, part-time help, temporary help, which really makes up the balance. And as far as the council contingency, last year, I believe it was 11,163 that went into restricted funds. But 20,000 was budgeted last year and 10,000 was budgeted this year for fiscal year 20 and 10,000 is budgeted for fiscal year 21. I thought we were still, reduce the amount that we're budgeting, but if there was any excess, it was going to go into the restricted fund. I don't believe we're reducing the budget by any certain amount if there was excess because we wouldn't know until the end of the fiscal year after the financial town meeting had already transpired.
Okay.
If it has no budget implication, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve if nobody else wants to discuss.
Any other discussion? There's been a motion made, will there be a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Anyone want to, any further discussion on this? Okay. As to the motion to approve the spending of the amount from the contingency funds, Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyager?
I'd just make one quick comment and that is, this is an opportunity to realize how much better last summer was than this summer, that we were having a Little League World Series and a fireworks show, but I'll vote aye.
Okay. Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you and thank you for reminding me, Jim. Next item is item 18. These are the proposed charter changes. Just to sort of explain these, the, one of them has been requested by our colleagues on the school committee. They've asked that we clarify part of the budget. I don't believe it makes any substantive change, but it does provide some clarity to one part of this. Three of these items, the last three are ones that we've already approved to go on to the ballot in November. Charter changes have to be made by our voting residents at an election. Those three were the ones that we wanted to put on there. That was before the, the school committee asked for this. I've always said that I wanted to keep it down to two or three items for each election so that we don't overwhelm the public because we've had those, that one year in 2014, I think, where we had a couple dozen. And that was, I think that was overwhelming for folks to really kind of learn about. I don't know if anyone wants to reconsider any of these, but let's, let's start discussion with 642, which is the one presented by our colleagues or requested by our colleagues. Counselor Boyager and I met with school committee member, doctor, excuse me, vice chair, Dr. Megan Douglas and the chair, Gina Bay. And we kind of worked out a language change to the last sentence of 642. I don't know if everyone on the council has it in front of them, but instead of saying gross school revenues and expenditures as submitted by the school committee, we decided to make it clear and just focus on, include the school committee budget as set forth in section 644, which includes gross school revenues, expenditures and capital items. And we also wanted to be clear, however such budget shall not be subject to the manager's review. That is not a change. That's just to make it clear, the manager does not, nor does the town council, review the budget of the school committee. Does anyone on the council have any questions, comments, thoughts on this? Does, okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to put the proposed charter change for 642 on the, on the ballot for November?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Vice President Weymouth, seconded by Counselor Boyager. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyager?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Before we get into the alternative budget approval process, because I think that ties in with item 20, in fact, I'll, I'll ask if, unless anyone has an objection, if we can move discussion of the alternative budget approval process to item 20, just before item 20, because they, they really deal with the same thing. How will we handle an FTM in COVID-19 world? Does anyone have any objection to moving it to then, moving the discussion down a place? Okay, seeing none. Now, do we want to maintain these three remaining items that we've already approved for the ballot? Or do we want to strike one so that we keep our three or strike two so that we keep our three if we decide to adopt a different one? Vice President Weymouth?
I think we keep, keep them all. It was really just getting rid of obsolete language or policies and simplifying the charter, which I think can always use simplification.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Hearn?
I agree with Counselor Weymouth. I think these, I mean, it's just four pretty simple changes in a couple of them. And I think it, every little step we take to kind of clarifying that charter is helpful. So I think it's not a huge task to ask the voters and I'd keep the four.
Okay. My number of three was entirely arbitrary anyway. So anyone else? Okay, so we don't have to take action on those because those were already approved. The next item is the, discuss and act on the Pride Month Ceremony Agenda. This, we, we made a resolution in May declaring June Pride Month and inviting members of the Barrington Pride Month Committee to hold a flag raising ceremony, although not specifically that committee, but, and they have scheduled that, that ceremony because of, you know, limitations based on COVID-19. They've asked that the town council attend by Zoom. And the only thing I wanted to make clear in, in doing this was to send a message. I was concerned that if we're not there, we're sending a wrong message. So I would like to just propose that we make a statement and the members of that group can, if they wish, read that statement at the, at the ceremony. If they don't want to, they don't have to do that. But I thought us making that statement would make it clear that we as a town council support the group, support the LGBTQIA+ community and that we're a welcoming town. So I proposed a statement and I sent it along. I don't know if everybody saw it, if anyone wants to talk about it or if they're comfortable with the statement. Vice President Weymouth? You're on mute.
I just wanted to say I'm comfortable with, again, the simplicity, straightforward statement that you proposed.
Anyone else? On the council?
I, I have a lack of comfort with the, the issue of an additional statement. We passed the resolution last month that already, that establishes Pride Month in Barrington. It establishes June as Barrington Pride Month. And part of that resolution was, was including the volunteer group having a flag raising ceremony. And I don't think it was, it was on us to be further involved unless we were invited to be.
Well, I think that this is an issue because we made this resolution last year, it showed that we think this is an important issue. We need to send a message, in my opinion, not just to this group, we do support the group, but also to everyone and sending that message to everyone in plain language rather than in the wherefore, wherefore, now therefore kind of language, I think is, is beneficial. They don't need to read it. We could certainly post it somewhere and it certainly wouldn't do any harm. So with that said, do you still object to the statement?
There are a couple of words that I would change. Our to, so our town hall to Barrington Town Hall. It's not the council's town hall. It's the town's town hall. And then change our town to Barrington in the first line.
Well, I don't object to the ceremony at Barrington Town Hall, but that would be the fifth Barrington in the sentence. So just stylistically, I thought in our town, it's all of our town. I don't think that, that is...
Okay. Well, so I could say the Barrington Town Council was thrilled to declare June as Barrington Pride Month because that is what we resolved to do.
That's correct. I was just trying to limit the number of Barringtons. One, two, three.
Well, we're just switching a duplicated Barrington to a duplicated town.
I don't object. Does anyone have any other comments on that? Okay, so I can send this along to you, Mary, but it, it will now read the Barrington Town if, if the motion passes and we'll get to that in just a second. The Barrington Town Council was thrilled, Barrington Town Council was thrilled to declare June as Pride Month in Barrington. And we are pleased to invite members of the Barrington, of Barrington Pride to conduct a flag raising ceremony at Barrington Town Hall. We want to express to people with LG, within the LGBTQIA+ community and all others, the residents and those outside of town, that Barrington is a rightful and inclusive community. Is that, is that a fair reading? Does anyone from the public want to be heard on this? Yes. Ms. Jordano, if you could take yourself off mute, please. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. I would like to speak on this. I'm a member of the group that council memberia put together. And this is my town. I'm a, you know, I live in Barrington. That's my house back there with my daughter. And I'm a new resident, two years. And when we did arrive here, we didn't really feel like it was our town. We felt othered. We knew, you know, it wasn't a celebration of pride. This is something that we, coming from New York City, expected. We, we were worried about the community that we moved into. Then two things happened. First of all, I got to know Councilmemberia, who invited me to, to this group where I met all the other LGBTQ individuals in this town and told me about his initiative that he worked on since he started at the town council, I believe. So for over a year now. He's been working on, for Barrington to celebrate Pride Month. And that really impressed me. So even if Jacob is not part of my community, he doesn't have my lived experience and he has done significant critical work in understanding our situation, understanding how enormous, what the enormous importance it is for us that we are recognized as a rainbow family and that we are equally part of the town in every possible way than anyone else who lives here. And I was listening in when you were all voting on this, I believe, last month. And I'm so grateful that the vote was unanimous. I was feeling, it was an amazing feeling. And I must say, I was a little worried when it was brought up on an agenda again because I was wondering, oh no, is this going to be up for discussion now? And the reason that this happens is that we're used to our rights, you know, getting rights, getting civil rights and then, you know, them being taken away again. And I understand that that's not your intention here, but there is something in the language and that makes me a little worried because our group were able to work with Jake, we chose to work with Jacob and Carl Costel and others that are, do not have our lived experience, specifically because they did all this critical work. Many, many Zoom calls, many emails assuring that the wording was right and so on. And we want to include them in our group. We feel safe with them. And if this was a day event where we could talk all day, maybe next year we could do that, talk all, all day, I would be, allyship is important. that, talk all, all day, I would be, allyship is important, and I would be so delighted if more people will talk or do social media that I hope everyone will do in the town. But this specific day, Pride itself has made a, a choice to limit our celebrations out of solidarity with our, with Black Lives Matter. So the time we're speaking is very, very, very short. So we feel like you've already done this amazing thing last, last time, when you voted, did this anonymous vote, we're, we're so happy about that. And we feel like, okay, we're all going to speak, I'm going to speak three minutes, I have a lot to say, as you can notice, I'm going to have to put that into three minutes, and then we have representatives of our community, I represent the Rainbow Family. And then we felt like, okay, but Jacob, who initiated this, who brought us together, he's representing the town in this, he's on the Town Council, and he gets a few minutes to speak. So I think that I'm excited that the town wants to speak, I'm excited for action, there's much more to be done. This might not be the year for it, this time, it's about speaking very shortly, you know, 20 minutes, and being, leaving that space for people that either are part of this, have this lived experience of being another, being discriminated against still, and for our allies who've done months and years of critical work, to become allies to us. So that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the statement of the Barrington Town Council? I'll make that motion, I'd make a motion to adopt the statement as amended of the Barrington Town Council. Is there a second?
I'll second it with the emphasis that if, if there is not time, or if the group that is speaking in that period of time on that date chooses not to, to use it, that's fine. I, I think it's important that, that we are included in the celebration, that's, so I'll make a second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion from the council? Vice President Waymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer? I'm sorry, you were muted.
I'm going to abstain, I'm speaking at the event, and I feel just a little odd voting on a, on a statement being made that, that I'm not making at something, so I'm going to abstain.
Very well. Counselor Hearn, how do you vote?
I'm going to vote aye, but I agree with Counselor Waymouth that they don't need to say it, and it, you know, would, might work just to have it on our website, I mean, I think an acknowledgement of support is, is important.
Sure, I, I think that'd be perfectly fine, I just, I did not want a message sent to anyone who didn't know the situation, that the, the Town Council as a whole didn't even bother to come. So, the motion carries four to zero to one with one abstention, Counselor Breyer. Next item on our agenda is, we're going back to item 18, and, and a discussion of financial town meeting alternatives. Just to sort of explain this a little bit, as everyone knows, because of COVID-19, we haven't been able to gather. We were very, until very recently, limited to five individuals in one place. We have a quorum requirement for our financial town meetings of 100, and they typically take place in, in an auditorium at the high school. And usually we get somewhere between 100 and 200, sometimes more, depending on the year. But we obviously couldn't do that, and the problem is that there really aren't great alternatives as they stand, so I wanted to talk about those alternatives, including a potential charter change, but before we do, I, I'd just ask our solicitor, Mike Rosillo, to kind of explain the legal background so people can understand, sort of where the source of the law for our financial town meeting. Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mike. The source of the law for our FTM comes directly from the residents of the town of Barrington as shrined in our town charter, it is the equivalent of a constitution, only the electors of the town have the power to change that document. Therefore, the procedures that are set forth for the conducting of the FTM can only be changed by the electors of the town, cannot be changed by emergency order or by the Town Council, et cetera. As you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the FTM was supposed to be held, could not be held because the governor signed an emergency order which prohibited gatherings of more than five, and then it was amended to gatherings of more than 15. That precluded us from holding our financial town meeting, and it was not only Barrington that ran into this issue, obviously several communities throughout the state who had similar problems. The governor addressed that issue recently in a new executive order, where she waived the 15-person requirement for financial town meetings, so that now Barrington and other towns can go forward and conduct them. So what, what are basically the options at this point? We can have a financial town meeting that is held outside with social distancing, it theoretically could be held inside if the space was big enough to accommodate the number of people who would show up, but I think that would be difficult. So one option is to do that, a second option, there's nothing in the charter which requires the meeting be held in person, so a virtual meeting, electronic meeting, a Zoom meeting is another possibility. One proposal that has been bantered about concerning having an all-day referendum, or a mail-in ballot, would not work, because the charter is very specific about how the financial town meeting must be conducted, and it must be conducted whereby residents of the town have the ability to interact, to make motions, to make proposals, and none of that could happen at an all-day referendum, it completely takes away that ability for the town residents to interact and to make suggested changes. So we won't be able to go in, you know, in that route. Circling back to the alternative budget approval process, which I think the council's about to discuss, that would only become effective if the electors approved it in November, whereby the need to hold a financial town meeting could be waived in the event that the state of Rhode Island, the governor, declared an emergency prior to the FTM taking place that continued subsequent to the time of the FTM. It would give the ability of the council to adopt a budget that didn't change more than 2% from the prior year's budget, but most importantly, it would allow public input at that meeting. So I, I think that is like a quick summary of what the options are for you to consider. You are free to move forward with an FTM, you are free to move forward with putting before the electors an alternative, God forbid, in case this were to occur again in the future.
So, before I open it up, just by way of explanation, we've got three things that we're looking at, all related. Should we hold an FTM electronically? Should we hold an FTM at Victory Field with social distancing? Those are two things that we could legally do within the next few weeks, months, certainly before November. The third thing is something that I, I decided to propose, and I'm just going to explain that I'm, we're now in a situation, as much as we're very much still in a state of emergency, and as much as the governor has modified or ordered to allow an FTM, remember that we were very recently at a time when the number of people in a group had to be five or less, and FTM would not be possible under those circumstances. What I'm proposing is a kind of, in case of emergency break glass, charter amendment, that would allow us, if we are facing something like this, indeed, even if we decide to have an FTM at Victory Field, it is certainly possible that we could see a spike in, in COVID rate, and that would make that impossible. But I am, I have proposed this as a way that the council could do it for a limited amount, only if there was an emergency declared by the governor, declared by the town, such that we couldn't hold an FTM, and that would limit it to 2%. The first two items we can definitely do as we are now, I think, so why don't we try to discuss whether those, which one of those we think is appropriate? Does anyone have anything to say on the alternatives presented to us for this year's FTM? Counselor Boyajin?
Yeah, so, looking at the options that were available to us, I, I mean, I don't like any of them. I think we're left in a circumstance where the only right answer is picking of the two alternatives, the one that has the least barrier to participation for our voters and residents. And I think the lowest barrier to participation, in large measure, has to do with people's perceptions about the danger involved in showing up in person, and their access to technology, and whether they have available, you know, two phone lines to call into a virtual FTM, or two computers to log in. I understand that a vendor can give us secure voting with passwords, that shareholder meetings have been conducted in this way successfully for major corporations, but really, I mean, it's a question we're guessing at what voters feel is the easiest way for them to participate, in the way that they've become accustomed. You know, I, I've tried to gather people's opinions, just saying, you know, they're as qualified as me to say how they feel about showing up in person at an FTM on the football field, or whether they have access to technology. I'll tell you, I concentrated on people of advanced age, because I figured they would be the most risk averse in terms of the virus, and the person I was lucky enough to get in touch with about it was Jim Jackson, who tells me out of 58 years in Barrington, he's been to 57 FTMs. And he missed one for a Little League game, he said there was nothing controversial that year, so he felt like it was okay. And he, he was of the mind that, you know, I think people will feel safe enough at the football field. So my, my gut tells me, you know, if someone of advanced age says, you know, this is the way we do it, and I feel safe enough, now, does he speak for everyone? Of course he doesn't. But I, I've asked other people too, and the impression I'm getting is, they do feel safe enough outside. I think the logistics are going to be complicated, because we're talking about mid-July outside, that erecting a tent kind of defeats the purpose of being outside. So it's either going to be hot as all get out in the middle of the day, or it's going to be all mosquitoes at night, and by that time of year, we're talking about, you know, not coronavirus, but AAA in West Nile. So you ask yourself, you know, do we need to be there at seven in the morning so people aren't fainting in the heat? But I, I think it's, it's the most logical solution. I'm not put off by the cost of the vendors who can put on these shareholder-type meetings, I think $12,000 was sort of the rough guess, which is not cheap, but to sort of ensure the continuity of our financial town meeting that has lasted this town 300-some-odd years, I'm okay with a $12,000 expenditure under these circumstances, that doesn't bother me, I just think that there are enough people who are comfortable with this, that this is going to end up being the solution with the least barrier to participation. So I, I think it's, it's an all-right idea under the circumstances, I don't love it, I don't, I'm afraid that some people will be worried about coming, and in particular, it will be people of advanced age, and I, I worry substantially about disenfranchising a segment of the population that might have a different interest in the outcome of these votes, right? So it's not just that it's a random sample of the population that might be concerned, we're talking about a particular segment of the population. That concerns me, but I don't think that that's going to be made materially better by having a virtual FTM, in fact, I think it's going to be the same group of people who are having the most trouble participating in that. So it's a struggle, but I think we don't have a choice but to hold one, and I think this is the way to do it.
Anyone else on the council? Counselor Breyer? You're on mute, sir.
I have a, a few thoughts and, and concerns about each that I'd like to discuss, but I was also wondering if we can possibly hear from the public, and then counsel comment after that, rather than before?
Counselor object to that, that formation? Seeing none, would anyone from the public like to be heard? Please raise your hand. Mr. Block?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I think that, obviously you're trying to deal with the emergency situation right now, but I think this blends in well to, I think, what's a larger problem with our financial town meeting, in that it is not a particularly accessible form of democracy for the great majority of Barrington citizens, and the evidence is in front of us, because such a small percentage of Barrington voters tend to participate in the town meeting. It's multiple hours, you have to be there in person, I would argue that the whole mechanism is archaic, and it acts to disenfranchise many, many, many more voters than who participate. So I believe that if we move towards either an electronic town meeting, or a fundamentally different-looking meeting than the one that we do now, that doesn't involve multiple hours and being there physically in person over multiple hours, I think we would get far greater participation, which gives us a stronger form of democracy. You know, remember when we gave everybody mail ballots, or the option to send in mail ballots in this primary that just happened, we had what effectively was a record turnout for uncontested primaries. So when you make participation in democracy easier, more people tend to participate. So I would encourage you, in fact, I would beg you, to pick a form in this emergency that begins to move us towards a more accessible form of the FTM, and I think that is not one that is done in person, I think that should be one that is done electronically, where we would have a great many more people participating. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, please raise your hand, if, from the public, if you'd like to be heard on this. Check the other screen. Ms. Strong, please. You're still on mute.
Yes, here we are. I was very pleased to see that you had a good in-person meeting option on your choices, and I think that is the way to go. I don't disagree fully with Mr. Block's comments, I think a hybrid is probably something we should look for for future town meetings, but I think, as Ms. Rosillo explained, this is what, this is, these are the choices that we have, and I think the in-person is it, so I guess we'll see how you guys vote, but that, that would be my choice, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Anyone else from the public? Let me check the other screen.
Mr. Carroll?
Let's see, any hands raised? Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Wicklun, from Lincoln Avenue, just wanted to give my opinion, I think it should be outside on the football field, on the... The charter is our sacred document, and I think we can do it. We're a high-standing town, and I recommend having it on the football field, and I think the people will show up, and I think we can do it in Mike. That's my preference and my thoughts about it. I think we can actually do it, and social distancing, obviously, but the other day the stayouts, we had 10,000 people. I think a downtown meeting will probably get about 1,000, if we're lucky, or maybe less, so I think we'll be okay, as long as you social distance, I think the Victory Field can handle that. And we have lights there.
Thank you. Ms. Rosengard?
Yes, thank you. My reading of the proposal is that we could only accommodate 435 participants there, and so what would happen if more than 435 people show up, which is pretty likely this year, given what our budget situation is likely to be? So I'm hopeful that that will be a part of the discussion as well.
Okay, thank you.
My vote would be for a virtual as well. I agree with Mr. Block.
Okay, thank you. Jim, what is the maximum number we could accommodate outside safely?
That varies considerably. I took the football field, which is 1.1 acres, and with the grandstand, the track, and the surrounding practice area close by, it would be about 1.5 acres, and that's how I arrived at the figure of 435. Now, that's 435 with 150 square foot, which is the requirement. However, what that doesn't account for is families can be in that same block of air. So we could, I'm assuming husbands and wives together, we could have considerably more than that. If we went with the outdoor one, we would get a speaker system that would allow for expansion into the other fields if necessary, in order to accommodate as many people as plan on attending. There's lots of possibilities there that we can make work.
Okay. Before we move on to the next person, I'm looking, I don't see our moderator, Julia Calafano. I had hoped that she would be here. I don't know if anyone has the institutional knowledge to remember when it was last held outside. I don't know what the number was. It has been done before. There was an outdoor meeting, but I cannot recall how many people were there. Does anyone here remember that number? Yes. Vice President Wain.
I know that Julia would remember the year, because that was the infamous tent meeting. I don't know, I don't believe it was held on Victory Field, and my question is, is the reason why it's being held on Victory Field in order to make sure that people who enter are voting residents, because it's sort of a contained space? Or what is the reason? And I'm assuming people aren't going to be sitting in the stands? Is that correct as well?
And the plan, Vice President Wain, was to use the stands. As far as checking goes, we would use typical access points that people use for the field, and because there's no Wi-Fi out there, we would use voter rolls to check people in. So they line up at six-foot increments, and they'd be checked in into that area, and we would expand out of it as necessary. But everyone would have to enter through the typical access points to Victory Field.
My understanding of the tent FTM, which was the only FTM outside, was that it was held on a more open field, not Victory Field, but that's, I don't know how they managed that.
I'm not sure if that, Rosengard?
Adam?
Please, go ahead.
I was just looking at the numbers for how many people attended. It was held over three days in 1991, and more than, almost 2,600 people showed up.
Yes.
That's a big collection, chief.
Yes, I was here in 1994, and it was, I was going to say over 2,000.
Mm-hmm.
Was there a particular topic on the agenda that did that?
The school budget, it was a big one.
I don't know, that isn't in my information.
It was the school budget, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
I believe it was, I was there. And Kate, to your point, the tent was kind of over, I think, where the varsity soccer field is now, near the parking lot?
Yes.
Right.
Behind there.
That is correct.
So it's certainly possible we could get as many as 2,000. You know, we vary, but I don't know if we've had 1,000, maybe we had 1,000 at special FTM for the, but in any case, I think we should prepare as if we're going to have a large enough number, but if we can do that, and just have speakers around the high school. Ms. Strong?
Is it possible, and I know it's, you know, come as you are, and you don't have to make reservations, but is it possible to do some sort of, like, not invitation, but send out an email to, or email to everyone and say, are you coming? Just so you can get a sense, obviously, you won't be able to turn anybody away, and that's not what I'm suggesting, but just so we can get an idea of how we have to prepare. I mean, it would be a shame to prepare, you know, the monetary costs involved with preparing for 2,900 people, and have 120 show up. You know, lots, as you know, well-known, Mike, I mean, lots of things happen between now and the night of the Financial Town Meeting, so.
Anyone else from the public want to be heard? Let me just check the other screen to see if anyone's raising.
Pam. Pam Loria.
Pam Loria, please.
Hi, I have a couple of questions. One, obviously, even when we have a Financial Town Meeting at the high school inside, there are overflowings, so we could have an alternate field, like at the middle school, as long as there's a television feed, and that's been done. But my question, besides that, and I agree, if there could be some sort of a way to ask the public to give us a general number, that could be done. Obviously, we can't be bound to that, but that could be done. But my question is, is there anything in the charter that would prohibit a proxy vote, so that people that felt that their health would be compromised with an in-person meeting, that they could have a proxy vote there to vote for them?
I'll ask Mike or Phil to answer that question. Seeing none.
This is Mike, or so, just unmuting myself. No, it is not possible to have proxy voting. It's not allowed. The best you could do is have, as was discussed earlier, perhaps have a second area nearby, where television somehow is being broadcast, and individuals might feel safer not being in the big crowd, but they would not be allowed to bring proxies to the meeting. You have to sign in, you have to be confirmed as a registered voter, and then you vote. That's really the bottom-line response.
I think that this discussion is going on, like, across the nation, and I just think we're not going to be out of the COVID woods in July. I think the elderly population, the logistics of, are 500 people going to be, like, the logistics of it outdoors, I mean, it's what made graduations on Zoom. I mean, I think we have a moment in which, if the technology's available for $12,000, that would allow however many people you need in the meeting, they guarantee that it's a, you know, that it's a crystal-clear entry. I don't see, I mean, I think, logistically, trying to pull off a Financial Town Meeting in July, you've got elderly people who are, you know, already not encouraged to be out in large gatherings. I think it is, this summer, a time to be tech-savvy and say, we go with it on Zoom. I don't think it's pretty, I don't think it's as warm and fuzzy as people like it to be, but I think this is the year of this kind of thing, and I think for $12,000, we would spend 10 times that, trying to put TVs out, and chairs out, and tents out, and turning people away. I just think at the end of the day, the logistics of pulling this off in a COVID environment, maybe, you know, if it's just a town hall meeting with a ton of people there, it's one thing, trying the logistics of it all in this environment, and we're not talking six months out, we're talking next month. So I, you know, think, unfortunately, that it is a Zoom time, so.
That's an excellent point, and it brings up a question that I had. It's, looking at the law, we appear to have those two options in front of us now, because it looks like we would need a charter change for anything else, but my question about the virtual one was the mechanics. Is it possible, and we, Counselor Boyajin spoke about that a little bit, but I'll ask, I'll ask if he could explain a little bit more about that, so that we could understand that, and then I'll ask our town manager, who I think met with a vendor about this, but I want to get a sense of the technical possibilities of this. Oh, go ahead, Kate.
I just want, is there not a limit on a virtual Zoom? I always thought that there was a limit of 500.
Yeah, so this is not going to be a Zoom thing. Major corporations, I caught wind of it because there was talk in my firm going around about how some of our clients are conducting shareholder meetings. Major corporations have been contacting their vendors since this happened, because they can't hold their shareholder meetings in person.
I think we're getting some interference. Want to try again, Steve? Not sure what the microphone issue is.
I couldn't tell you. It doesn't sound any, is that all right?
Yes, yes.
So major corporations have been holding their shareholder meetings remotely. They obviously have to have them under their bylaws and charters, they have to approve compensation elect directors, and their numbers of, you know, a major corporation far outnumber the residents of the town of Barrington. So they're able to do it, and they're actually able to do it securely, because they send out passwords to the registered shareholders, saying, this is how you get in, and you won't be able to vote, and they vote virtually, won't be able to vote without this unique password. Logistically, it can happen, we can exceed the numbers that Zoom might allow under any given contract. I think, I mean, primarily, the concerns that arise for me are, are people tech-savvy enough to do it? Do they have the technology? Then the most salient question, I think, came out when Jim pointed out in an email, and I'm not sure if it was the whole council or back and forth with me, that what do you do about houses that have, say, one phone line? Now you have a husband and wife, who are given access, but they get one vote, right? They can't both participate on the same phone line, they both can't cast the same vote on the same phone line. Same goes for their computer connection. So we might be in a situation where we have a bunch of, certain segment of the population that's not tech-savvy enough to do it, and you have another segment of the population that even if they get in, they don't have enough devices to support the number of voters that are in the household, and we're sort of happy with those right there. So, you know, had this been March, when we didn't have any concept of how awful this disease is going to be, if we hadn't seen declining numbers, and we didn't know, is it going to, you know, go on to the end of the earth, or is it going to tail off like it seems to have to some extent? I think I'd be saying that the only way to do this is virtually. But we're in a situation now where, I think, you know, this weekend's demonstration is evidence of it, people feel relatively comfortable outside, at a distance, wearing masks. You know, it's not the terror that accompanied, you know, going out to go grocery shopping and marching eight. So I think, you know, the vendors, if you write them a big, yeah, they'll find a technical solution, I'm sure of it. But what happens, for example, if someone's wireless comes out in the middle of the meeting? You know, they were about to speak, and no one got to hear what they were going to say. I just had a microphone issue in a town council meeting. It happens when it's time for a vote. And you might pay a vendor to set up the platform, connectivity issues of every resident in Barrington are all going to, you know, come home to roost at the same time, the help line is going to have all these calls, you know, hey, it's a town vote, what's going on? I can't get in. And so I have some reservation about it, but the technology is there, vendors are marketing very hard right now to major corporations, saying, we can do this, and they are doing it successfully. One option that I only read about, Jameson is doing an outdoor Financial Town Meeting that they have scheduled, it's going to be like a drive-in theater, and the meeting is going to be broadcast on the radio station, just like at the drive-in. So, you know, you say there are technical solutions even at the in-person meeting, to sort of accommodate people who, I don't want to get out of the car. But I don't want to cross the line from the technical details that I think we hand over to the administration or the canvassers, and say, you guys can work on the technical details of how this meeting is going to work. We need to answer, I think the question is, you know, when we issue the warrant, is it you're going to come to the high school, or you're going to be in your living room? That's the question I think we need to answer. I think the technical details are going to be evolving, you know, all throughout, but Jim can probably talk to all those points.
Jim, I'll get to you in just a second. Counselor Hearn, you wanted to say something?
Oh, I just found out Lexington, Massachusetts, just did their Financial Town Meeting online. So there is a relatively similar universe, and, you know, I think that they probably face the same conversations and challenges, and I just think with all that we're doing now on this technology platform, people seem to be able to dial in the phones, it seems to be working. We're getting more attendees at our town council meetings than we've ever had. I mean, I tend to think it's probably a way more inclusive way to do it than getting people out in a COVID environment to attend. So that's kind of my last little piece.
Ms. Longenstein? Yes, please.
Sorry, I'm just going to mute.
You can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I can't hear you now, you just muted. There you are. Go ahead.
First, thank you for calling on me, Mike, and thank you for all the work that you've done regarding the Pride Group that they asked me to moderate, and I was also one of the people they asked me to help them. The reason I raise my hand is because I'm just sort of listening in, because I'm very sensitive to what's gone on with COVID, as you know, and I have been monitoring the situation in Italy, that's why I started with the mask initiative that I did in early March, before it seemed like it was going to be necessary. What's happening now there is they're starting to see quarantine fatigue, and whereas people were very careful up until now, people are starting to not be careful. And they've addressed this by frightening people with terrible messaging about how you die of COVID, which is suffocation. And the reason I bring this up is because we're seeing COVID fatigue, quarantine fatigue, behavioral change fatigue in this country as well. We don't know, Barrington's been very good, we all know that, but I just really agree with what Joy has said, and I'm listening very carefully to all of you, and I think that the option of people coming together in a two-month-from-now timeframe, or whatever it is, month, month and a half, is potentially improved. And I think that with all the technological changes that have been made, and people getting used to technological changes, and people... and people being forced to COVID technological changes, $12,000 sounds like a lot of money that could be used to encourage people to adopt new technological attitudes that could be used for future events as well, to build more inclusivity when we do have other problems, which means either a recurrence of this virus or other viruses, other challenges that are going to force us to live in isolation. And so there are people who were tremendously marginalized during this problem. And the $12,000 could be used to help them engage in everything else that goes on in Barrington. And so it could be considered not just funds for participation in the financial town meeting, but funds for finding new ways to technologically recruit our community.
Thank you. Councilor Brier.
I got it unmuted that time before I started speaking. An idea with the virtual town meeting would be that the school department has many, many computers. And in, in town and, and whatever vendor we use have the personnel that can help. So we have access for folks who have two voters but one device at home. I think we could bring small groups together where one volunteer can help with the comfort of the technology aspects and the equipment resources. So I think we can improve the, or mitigate that concern of the, the participation problem with resources we already have available. And I think it's a, it's a way to move to a more potentially inclusive process. I, I've been hoping for a referendum because I think it's a way to have everybody participating in a, in a completely safe way. I understand though that that's not an option. I think going toward virtual is the next best. We have obstacles no matter what we do, but I think that's one way to, to mitigate one of the problems.
I'm sure there are going to be a ton of obstacles. Those are good ideas to, to address those. I have sort of a specific question for Steve or Jim. My memory of it, and I was trying to pull it up, but I can't, is that the charter requires it to take place in Barrington. Does that mean that if someone is, I don't know, out of state somewhere, they could log in? And I'm sure you could if you were a shareholder. But if you were a voter, is it required that you be in Barrington? I should direct that to Mike or Silo. And maybe that's a tough pop quiz, but my memory of the charter was that you had to be, it had to be in Barrington. And would that mean that the computers had to be in Barrington?
This is Mike or Silo. So the requirement is for the meeting to be in Barrington for sure. And that's for individuals who participate to show up at the meeting. I think it would be okay to say, as long as the meeting itself is in Barrington and someone logs in from outside of town, they're participating within the town. So I, I would check it again, but I, I don't think that should be a barrier.
Okay. Just, just a thought. There are lots of little things like that. Did anyone else want to be heard on this?
A mic? Oh.
Yes. That's Steve Promiano. Steve, please.
I raised my hand, but I don't think I'm on your screen. One quick thing, I have attendance figures for town meetings from 1984. And other than the one of almost 3,000, only two went over 1,000. The one we all remember from the special one for the, the high school bond or junior high school bond. However, I had a question. Would either of these options preclude us from having a secret ballot? Either the online option or the victory field option?
Jim, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, no, neither one would. Obviously, the virtual would be a secret ballot. I'm assuming that the firm would keep who voted what way private. And we'd have the voting machines in place like we do for the regular meetings if we were to have it on the field. I have some grave concerns about a virtual meeting. I think the obstacles that we will put in front of our residents will be too many of our residents will, will be too difficult to overcome. I only talked to one firm called Mass AV. They'd have to hire a second firm to do the phone if someone wanted to do it over the phone. Our court's office would have to collect, people would have to register for the FTM to get their password. And the court's office would have to do that. I, I just think the virtual, we're going to get there sometime. But I think under the circumstances, the virtual is, in my mind, throws up more obstacles and roadblocks than the outdoor FTM. The outdoor, my plan was to have a tent up for the, in a separate area for the, for the elderly. So they feel a little more comfortable by themselves in the shade. I, I think it's very similar to what our town is used to as far as how the meeting's held. It's just a different venue. Throwing them into a virtual, a virtual environment for many, many of our residents is going to be very difficult, if not impossible, for them to navigate. And for that reason, I've, I've, my strong recommendation, as you read in my memo, was that we, that we do it, the FTM outdoors. I've had numerous conversations with the Department of Health. They wouldn't have approved this if they thought it was a problem. You know, the separation is fine, the mask wearing. You know, I know there are some concerns and I, and there will be some people concerned, but they're, they're going to make their own choices as to how they're going to do it. I just think the virtual becomes very, very difficult for people to do. Based on what I've seen in town hall and people on the phone, there's many people in our community that would not be able to participate if we were virtual.
Okay. Ms. Strong.
I just wanted to follow up on the Lexington town meeting. It's actually a little more involved. They do both zoning board changes, charter changes and financial town meeting. And what happened is they broadcast it on the local cable interconnect. And then they had voting where people had to actually go to a poll to vote. So that, that was sort of a hybrid. It wasn't done completely online. And I agree with Jim. I think there are a lot of people that you will disenfranchise by having it completely online. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that description of the Lexington having people watch and then vote wouldn't work for us because every person who comes to the financial town meeting has a right to make a motion, has a right to be heard. So we couldn't just do that. That, that would not be in keeping with our, our charter. And that's what we've got to go by now. Let me look. We've got two screens here. I'm going to check. Let's see. Would anyone else who I can't see like to be heard?
Hi, Mike. This is Kim Jacobs.
Hi, Kim. Please go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify. I believe our town manager said that it would be a two-step approach if we went online. Is that correct? You would have to sometime in a certain period before the town financial meeting, go to the town hall and get a sign in, register and get a code to go online?
You'd have to get a password and you'd have to check your ID to make sure that you were a registered voter. By doing it as you walk into the financial town meeting where we simply check you off on the voter roll.
Right. So in other words, my concern is that if, if someone, you know, is, is not as engaged as perhaps they should be and doesn't recognize that they have to do that beforehand and, and plans to attend the meeting that evening, then they would not be able to because they wouldn't have gotten their code. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So that, yeah, so that to me is a concern with holding it online.
I think possibly from this conversation, one thing we should consider, if we do go with an outdoor this year, is to look at over the course of the next 12 months at, at working towards a virtual. I just trying to push this thing as quickly as we have is of concern to me. And, you know, doing some investigation as to how we might be able to make this work over the next year makes more sense to me than rushing into it.
Mike, it's Richard Staples.
Richard, please, go ahead.
Yes, I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the earlier statement about no technology on the football field. Certainly there is technology that can be, either be provided with existing technology within our town or through a contract with one of the wireless providers. But I believe you could set up very capable Wi-Fi hotspots on the field so that all the technology that we have for registration and other things that may require technology during the course of the meeting can be handled in that site. I was a little troubled by the fact that we thought somehow we had to go back to manual confirmation, to the point of the earlier speaker's comment. I think everybody can be enfranchised to participate in the financial town meeting as they walk in. I think the idea of pre-registration is a good one, which would certainly help slow down the queue, especially if a lot of people came. But I don't think you're at all precluded from using technology on the field itself. And I would certainly hope that with all the, all the Wi-Fi towers that are directly above us, we should probably all glow in the dark from just being there. But it'd be nice to fall so we could use the actual waves to help us facilitate the meeting.
Thank, thank you, Richard. I would, as we think about kind of the safety and the, the concerns, one of the, probably one of the highest risk times, right, is when someone's coming in, they're being checked. That's when they're closest. And then if we were doing it outside, they could be separated possibly substantially, possibly a lot more than by six feet, depending on how many people came. But it sounds like we would still need people to come to some location, even if we did it virtually, to, to identify themselves as an elector who is intending to come. I don't, I don't know if there's a way that we could do it entirely virtually. I'm not crazy about that idea because it seems like we want to make sure that this truly is a, you know, a Barrington resident who's, who's looking to vote. Am I right to say that they would need to physically come to some location to get a password? Or, or is there some way you could identify them as a voter without having them come in? And the reason I ask that is because if there are folks who are going to be concerned about contact, that's another point of contact. It seems to me that it may be unavoidable under either option to have some amount of contact. Do you know, Steve, if there's a way, Steve Boyajan, if there is a way? I would imagine that with shareholder meetings, they can do that. But I can't think of a way you could do it with, with a financial town meeting where people have to be registered voters in the town.
Right. I think that's right. I mean, you know, if you're a shareholder, you get your proxy materials in the mail, right? And you send them back. I mean, that's easy enough. But verifying a voter's identity is a, you know, an election law matter. And I think Mary could probably speak to it, but I think we have to check them, right?
I think so. Mary?
You do have to check them in. You have to keep account of who's, who's, you know, who's a registered voter and who's not. One thing I can tell you is, and, and I'm, I'm, you know, talking to think. So each voter has an ID, a scanned ID, which is pretty helpful when we used to have the small ballots. We would scan it in with our guns and it would go right to their record. So I'm starting to think like that might be helpful that that voter, if you talk to somebody that's more technologically sound, that voter would have their own ID. It's like a scan bar. That's one thing. The second thing, you know, you were talking about how many people came to that meeting in 1991. I found my notes. I had my assistant Stephanie pull up my chart that I had made when, when I was part-time. So in 1991, that first night, that meeting, that first meeting had over 2,100 people. And it only lasted less than a half an hour. The second night, there were 2,2569 people that showed up. That meeting lasted four hours. And the third meeting had about over 1,200 people. And that also lasted over four hours. So you're talking a lot of people.
Yeah.
And, and you know my gut. I'm, I'm good with the numbers. I see it will be big. It will be big.
Okay. Mary Zarkarnak, and she has, at the meetings, I like to lean over and ask her how many people were coming. And she usually gets it pretty close, pretty close to the right number. So if you're expecting something big, it's a sort of farmer's almanac of the FTM's. But it does sound, Mary, like people would have to, under either way, they would have to physically come to one of your staff to be admitted as a registered voter and checked in. So it doesn't sound like it provides, like even the virtual meeting would provide absolute distancing. So if someone didn't want to come anywhere close, I don't know how we could accommodate them because I think they'd still need to come to get a password or whatever it is for the virtual meetings. So that, that would seem to weigh. I'm sure there's less because they won't be, you know, next to anyone at the field. But certainly it's, it's not done. Would anyone else from the public like to be heard on this?
There are a couple hands raised.
Just check this. You know, I can't see the hands for some reason. Want to tell me who they are?
Mari Thompson.
Mari Thompson, please. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you. I was wondering why, if you do the virtual Zoom idea, why you couldn't send out to every registered male, there's, through mail, every registered voter, their ID and voter code. Like, I, I understand that's expensive, but that would be a way of really eliminating that in-person. That's one of the major concerns. It's a way of eliminating that in-person contact. The other option would be if they had to come in person to get their, their code. They could do it over a series of days, similar to like, well, sort of in a similar situation how you did the voting last week in the high school, but do it over a number of days. So it also limits contact because I think it's a huge concern. Like you could set this all up as a, based on our numbers right now that are very low, but we don't know what that's going to look like in two weeks, four weeks.
You know, that.
It's very complex and I appreciate you guys trying to do everything. It's very complex.
That's, that's an excellent point. I, I asked the question because I, I don't know the answer, which is, we do absentee voting. So do we need an in-person contact for people to get a, to get a code or, or whatever? Or could we do it simply based on the address of the registered voter, sending to them a letter to that effect? And I don't know the answer to that. Maybe we can come back to that as the few lawyers on the line are, are looking at that and other folks. Mary, please.
Let me check with a Secretary of State since each voter, as I said, has an ID number. Let me see if, you know, Rob Rock or Bob Proposa from Board of Elections has ever heard of this in other states because they must go to a lot of conferences. Let me, let me do some research on the voter ID that each person has.
And let me ask Jim, what the, let's talk about the costs. Now, you mentioned $12,000 for, as a kind of first number from one vendor for the virtual. Now, you mentioned 12,000 for, as a kind of first number from one vendor for the virtual. I presume that doesn't include a mailing, but which would be, my memory is that a...
A $5,500.
Yeah, for a mailing, townwide mailing. And then what about the cost of the Victory Field one? Is that the...
Victory Field one, my intention was to, the school has 300 chairs, to bring those out, but kind of have them stacked off to the side and ask people to either sit in the stands or to bring their own camp chair, sit out on the field with it, or take, you know. So I don't think the cost is that expensive. It's a microphone. We've got a bias that we can use for the moderator or whoever the speaker may be. But, you know, I think the biggest cost would be getting a robust microphone system that would allow us a flexibility to expand it out into the fields, all the fields if necessary, you know, as people come in. One of the things that I know other communities have done, when they, people register and when there's access problems, they give them a wristband. And that wristband is the sign that they are a registered voter and that prevents people from, you know, if you don't have controlled access points, it's a way for you to be able to control, make sure that people are voting. So I don't see the cost of going outdoors is that expensive, quite frankly, even if we have to rent some chairs. George Finn has tents that we could use for the elderly population and I think hopefully we'd have some decent weather where, you know, wear a hat and some sunscreen and pretend you're at Barrington Beach.
And what's the cost typically of, on an annual basis?
I'm sorry, Mike, you broke up.
The cost of an FTM, regular FTM, last year?
$6,255, according to our town clerk. That's the average cost. That's an FTM with 750 people in the auditorium, $900 for part-time staff, $2,000 for full-time, $800 for poll workers, about $2,200 for contractual services, custodians, video and sound, which that would change because we would need custodians, but we certainly would need more in the sense of microphones and that type of thing. I don't think we need any video. You know, hearing, there's no presentation, the budget hearing will take care of a presentation. We'd have to do some printing of the proposed budget so people had that as a reference as we spoke to it. And then there's about $500 worth of advertisement for voter registrations and the warrant and that type of thing.
Okay.
So I would guess that the cost of the FTM at the field would be somewhere in that same range, maybe a little bit more.
Okay. Councilman Breyer?
So I know the virtual seems like it would certainly cost more than we spend in other years and would certainly cost more than we would spend to have it at Victory Field, but we budgeted for the presidential primary, assuming we'd have five polling locations open and it was just town hall. I'm wondering if there's money saved from that and so if so, there's money in this budget area that can cover some of the obstacles to a virtual.
Mary?
During this time period, a lot of things changed. I had to, I had to buy new equipment, like sneeze guards, I had to buy scanning guns. We went from a presidential preference primary four years ago with 246 mail ballots. We then went to over 4,500, say about 45, we processed about 4,300 mail ballots. You know, there was just different things that I had to buy, a lot of different signs, you know, some other supplies. So, you know, I think I spent just as much.
Right. And I guess I'm looking at it and thinking that, you know, this is an important issue and if the numbers were wildly different, if it was a $25,000 spread on these things, and of course, that might help us indicate the choice, but a difference of $5,000 or $6,000 in terms of a public safety issue, it doesn't strike me as that consequential in terms of our decision-making process.
I do think we will have a financial issue. Currently, the Board of Canvases has $15,000 and we've got another primary and a general election to go as well as the FTM, so we would have to search elsewhere to get some funds to support that.
The, technically, that's supposed to be in next year's budget, right? The...
Yeah, you're correct. You're correct.
And I think the primary would be too, so...
Assuming we can have an FTM before the November election.
Hopefully.
So if we have $15,000 currently, I mean, that's $15,000 remaining in a budget that ends in 22 days, right?
Yeah, but that, it does not include the cost of the presidential preference primary.
Yeah, we just have...
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Is anyone else raising their hand? I don't see that. Would anyone else who's on the telephone like to be heard on this? No one? In terms of the council, my, I'll just, I think I'll start the discussion. My view is that the both have a certain amount of risk unless someone has discovered that you don't have to have any in-person contact at all for the virtual. Can we mail them their password? We don't know the answer to that under the election law.
I think the problem with mailing, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but mailing the password, you lose control of the password. When they do mail ballots, they actually file out an application that we send them the mail ballot. But if we just broadcast passwords out to every voter in town, you lose control of the voters.
Well, that's why I kind of want to check with Secretary of State to see if they've heard of anything by using their voter ID numbers and what we could do with that. I don't know, it's just a thought, so...
I think you can use the voter ID as the login because then you know who is voting and then the passwords can be randomly set. And so when you mail out everybody's password, you're mailing the password that only works with their voter ID.
That's what I'm trying to discover, yeah.
I don't know where the law stands, but I know where the technology stands and it's actually a fairly simple technology issue.
Is this information that we'd like to have before we vote on this? Councilor Breyer, would you like to know for sure if we can do this or is that not relevant to your thinking?
Oh, I mean, I'm confident that we can do it, but I'm also fine waiting until everybody else has all the information they need for a comfortable decision.
Right. I guess I'm not talking about technologically. I'm asking, I don't know the law on this.
Yeah. Yeah, I would want to know if we legally cannot do it, then it certainly changes my view.
Okay. Would the members of the council be willing to attend a special town council meeting to make this decision after we get that answered? Or would you prefer to decide tonight? Vice President Weymouth?
I'm really on the fence about this whole issue because neither, neither decision sits well. But I do think that if we, if the town is going to move more towards a virtual, I think we are rushing, rushing it if we do that for this financial town meeting. I don't feel comfortable that by mid-July, we will have all the bugs worked out in how it's possible to do. I think if, if that's the future, then give ourselves the time to, to really work out, work out how this is going to happen. So I think I would be, I'm more inclined to have an in-person FTM, although I've never liked the, you know, I've, every time this issue of an FTM comes up, I've always wished that we had, we could change that. I'm not a big fan of the FTM, but I think in this case, because people need a little more feeling of, the world hasn't completely changed too rapidly, I think I am, I am at this point more inclined to have it in-person, although it's, it's a, it's a bad choice.
And you feel comfortable making that decision tonight?
Yeah, I do.
Counselor Hearn, I see you raising your hand.
Oh, I wasn't raising my hand, but I would love to know the answer to the question, but I, you know, feel pretty strongly, we have moved just as a society to a much more logically-based universe and I feel pretty comfortable that there are companies out there that can handle this just fine. And I agree with Counselor Weymouth, I'm not a huge fan of the financial town meeting and I think it needs to change a venue anyways and I say, we're doing online education, there's a reason for it and I think by mid-July, I don't see us being that much different and if we are, then we really should, you know, look carefully at lots of different things. So I'm ready to make a vote tonight.
Okay. Great, thank you. Counselor Boyajin?
If anyone wants information that they don't have, I can certainly do a special meeting anytime. I'm good to go personally, but there's no, you know, other than that, we need to get it done quickly. I don't see any reason we couldn't do this 48 hours from now if someone wants to, but I'm fine tonight.
So the only reason that I can see for postponing a vote on this is if the question of whether someone needs to be in-person to register for a virtual meeting or whether they can do it simply by mail and then get their login, that's a legal question that's probably going to take some work and probably interpretation at the state, at the Secretary of State's office. So if everyone is comfortable making a vote tonight, Counselor Breyer, are you comfortable under those circumstances? Or do you think we should postpone it?
No, I, I can, I guess I can vote tonight and if, if it's reliant on doing something that we later find out we can't do legally, then we would just have to call a special meeting at that point and figure out a new plan, right?
Well, so to be clear, I don't think, I don't think that is the question. I think if we voted tonight to have a virtual FTM, then we could do so, assuming the logistics worked. But then there is a question over whether the folks who'd rather not have any contact might still need to come to town hall or some other location to get their password. And we don't know the answer to that tonight, but it wouldn't change the fact that we could have a virtual.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good to vote.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion on either way?
I'll make a motion that we move to have a virtual town meeting.
Okay, the motion's been made to have a virtual financial town meeting. Is there a second?
I second that.
And seconded by Counselor Hearn. Any further discussion by the council?
I had a question for Kathy. I know right now, because of deadlines in terms of advertisement and the warrant and things like that, at the earliest we can really do this is mid-July, if I'm correct?
I have to advertise, once the COA finalizes the budget, I have to advertise in the paper 10 calendar days before the financial town meeting.
Mary? All right, go ahead.
It would be up to COA, Town Council, whoever, to determine if they want the advertisement in the paper prior to the budget hearing or for the matter.
Now, we have to have a certain amount of time for motions too, right? We have to provide every 30 days to file motions.
So I have to, you know, advertise for last day to register. I have to, you know, you have the motions, I have to, you know, put out a warrant, but that's, that's seven days prior to the meeting.
And I guess, the reason I'm asking these questions, I'm trying to figure out how far out we can push the financial town meeting before we have sort of a, you know, legal problem about the expenditure of funds. I mean, obviously, our fiscal year starts July 1. Anyone kind of know the answer to that?
In terms of being able to spend?
Yeah. The reason I... I'd be more comfortable with the virtual FTM if we could sit down with vendors for eight weeks or 10 weeks and prepare and get it to work right and everyone says, it's going to be fine, we've already ironed out the bugs. What I see happening is that, you know, we're realistically talking about kind of, you know, after July 1, we're on borrowed time. We don't have the authority to levy taxes and spend money, but we don't have luxury, unless I'm wrong about that, we don't have the luxury of saying, let's have it in August. And if we did, I'd be much better about it that, you know what, we're going to solve these problems, it's going to work fine. Right now, I think we're going to take a crash course in technology that kind of ends badly and I'm asking these questions because if I'm wrong about that, that would affect my vote. I'd be, I'd be fine with a virtual FTM if I thought it would go off without...
Mike Gerstillo? So what happens on July 1 when we haven't had an FTM yet, even if we've got it scheduled for the 15th or something? What happens on July 1?
I think you're fine because the governor's emergency order clearly, it addresses the issue of the fact that FTM's going to take place into the next fiscal year. Like, I think you're good. I will say this, the closer you can have it to the end of the fiscal year, the better just because it's probably safer that way. You wouldn't want to be having this in October or November, for instance. That much of a difference between July and August? Probably not, but it just seems to me, there are a lot of other things that follow legally from the results of the FTM, everything from setting the tax rate, getting the bills out, et cetera. Otherwise, you may have to send out a second set of bills. I would think you'd want to get this done sooner rather than later.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion, members of the council? Motion's been made and seconded. Yes, Counselor Hearn?
Sorry, I was wondering, Jim, do you have any updates on the legislation that's going to be filed in terms of where that stands and what it includes?
Legislation was filed today.
Legislation was filed today, or, or it's taken to the State House today, and I just got a copy of it late today that I can share with the council. Um, I, I talked to, um, Mike about it, Mike has a different feeling about it, and he can address that as to the legality of it. But the legislation, I have a copy of, and, um, it provides for the towns, um, annual fiscal year appropriation measure and tax levy previously adopted to support such annual appropriation, I'm trying to get to the right place here. By adoption and passage of a new annual appropriation and tax levy by ordinance by city, town, or five districts governing body in the same manner in which an ordinance is adopted as set forth in the city, town, or five district charter. So, basically, this, this legislation, if it is constitutional and passes, um, and we've got the majority leader who's going to sponsor it, uh, would allow the town council to, um, to approve the fiscal year budget this year.
And, uh, that's, so that is, to, to sort of explain this, um, that's an attempt to find an alternative way. I, I can tell you that my reading is that I would have very serious concerns about whether that would have the authority, that we would have the authority to do that even with that legislation, because our charter does not permit it to be done in that way, and we have to go not just by state law, but also by our charter. And I don't believe that, although the legislation does propose to abrogate town charters, um, my understanding is it can't do that under the Constitution. Mike, am I right about that?
I, I agree with you totally, I do not believe that the General Assembly has the power to change, it can change statutes, but it can't change our town charter, and it can't pass a law in contravention to our town charter. I think such legislation would be subject to tremendous challenge, um, and, and it sounds like it's going to be a very long process either way, um, this comes out.
And I hadn't been really tracking it very, I mean, I've, I've got a copy of it, but I, I didn't think that this town council wanted to head in that direction.
My understanding was the legislation had more than one piece in it, is that the only piece in the legislation that allows the board to vote?
I'll have to read through it again, Counselor Hearn, I'll, I'll send, as soon as we're done here, I'll send a copy to all the council, as well as Mike, so you can take a look at it yourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Breyer.
Just wanted to respond a little to, um, Counselor Boyajin's concerns about, you know, sitting down with a vendor and making sure that what we put in place is right, that it's the right vendor and the right system and solution. And that's, that's important, but what we're, the, the technology aspects of this are solved problems that are fairly simple. We, we have a very particular use case, but it's not something that's going to take, you know, multiple weeks, you know, more than a month to figure out with a software company. A software company is going to be able to listen to our needs, and within one or two meetings, tell us how they would execute on it and give us the price. It's not going to be a lot of back and forth, we don't have to have something custom done for this.
No, and I don't mean to suggest that it's the, uh, the vendor's technology side that I'm concerned about. I mean, you know, my law firm's been working remotely for three months now, I go to court remotely, um, and that's not the issue, it's that, what are we going to do about the residents who say, my connection conked out, or any of these other things? And we don't have tech support, you know, to, to sort of run to their house in the middle of the meeting. So, when I mean iron the bugs out, I mean things like, does every resident know how to get their password, you know, does every resident have a device to participate? And I, I, I take your suggestions as good ones about, you know, sort of employing the school department's technology capacity and things like that. And that's why I talk about how much time do we have? Because I don't think realistically, the kid, you know, the kids know how to use computers at home, this is coming back, you know, and we're going to have them reissued to every household that asks for one, and, you know, then someone's going to call up and say, well, you know, I couldn't get onto the computer because I, Lord knows, my kids are doing that every morning, and I can just see it unfolding in a very sort of, you know, as we get up to the meeting, um, I, I don't know. It makes me think of like Fire Festival, right? Best intentions, and then the day comes, and none of us are prepared for the fallout of sort of, you know, we weren't, we didn't, we weren't built for this.
Yeah, yeah, there will absolutely be individual challenges, I could be headed to the FTM in person and I get a flat tire. I mean, that's the, that's the same as somebody's internet conking out, or, you know, you get stuck, called into work and you can't show up. I mean, we can't solve for everybody's individual problems, no matter what we decide, and the old solution didn't do that either. But yeah, I understand, there, there will be people left behind in, in either, in either scenario, but only one scenario carries potential public health risk. That's, that's where I fall.
Okay. My own view, having worked for a software company, is that it's hard to do that quickly, even if they do it, um, a fair amount, it's always hard to turn things around that quickly. I don't have, um, a high level of confidence in the, in the technology just yet. I don't know a lot about it, I'll, I'll concede that, but, uh, this isn't one of those things where, where, even when we talked about Lexington, they do it a little bit differently. Maybe we want to try and find other cities and towns that maybe do this, um, because I do think it's different than a, a shareholder meeting in, in a number of respects. But, um, so that's, that, that would be my concern. Any further discussion, the council, we have a motion made and seconded. Okay? The motion is to move forward with an FTM, as a virtual FTM.
President Cal, I, I see that a member of the public, Ms. Clancy, has her hand raised, you missed it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I may, this may be out of order. I just, and I, I was not able to make the first seven or so minutes of the meeting, so I don't know if you covered this, but if it is a outdoor, in-person meeting, would there be an option, is there any way for there to be an option for those who are not comfortable being there? Or is it one, I, I would expect actually that it's one or the other.
I, I believe that the, the conclusion that we've come to is that it's one or the other, and Mike Rosillo can, can kind of explain that, because you have to, there has to be an ability to, for each person to have the opportunity to make a motion and to be heard.
Yeah.
So, a mail-in ballot would not permit that.
And is there no allowance for somebody choosing to not make a motion or be heard? And choosing to vote remotely? I don't know, I'm just, I, I think it's, I think I do, I come down on the, I understand all the logistics and the costs and the, everything, but it, in this, as, as Counselor woman Hearn calls it, this COVID environment, it does seem very difficult to give people no choice but to maybe put themselves in an uncomfortable situation. But that's just my two cents.
Okay, thank you. So, motion has been made, motion's been seconded to go to a virtual FTM. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Nay.
Counselor Boyajin, how do you vote?
Nay.
Counselor Breyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote nay, so the motion does not carry. This is one that I think, even if we disagree on, we agree that there, neither option is, is ideal, uh, but we're faced with tough ones. Would someone like to make a motion to have an FTM outside?
I'll make that motion.
Just a moment, please, Ms. Lowenstein, motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded, made by Vice President Weymouth and seconded by Counselor Boyajin, uh, and, Ms. Lowenstein, you want it to be heard?
Um, yes, I just want it to be heard between the votes, because, um, I just am, uh, it's just a, a question, has anyone on the council received a, a quote, an estimate, um, a reference for a company that can do this? I just am not sure, if a vote's being held on the subject that has to do with a choice between public health and a potentially complicated, but we don't know if it's complicated, software option or combination of software hardware, is it possible to delay the vote for some time to get those options? A lot of companies around that are, you know, making money doing this right now, and, just throwing it out there, I'm, I'm just listening and concerned for the self, the healthcare, the, the health aspect, extremely concerned that this form of quarantine fatigue to even consider an open air, an open, uh, in-person meeting, open air or not.
Thank you, we did actually get a, a quote, and it was $12,000 plus, plus the cost of a vendor, but, um...
I understood that $12,000 was for the open-air version.
No, 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 we, we, in the range of $6,000.
Yeah, and that, that $12,000 is a very rough quote from, you know, just throwing dots at the board, so I, that could vary considerably.
Motion's been made and seconded, Counselor Breyer, more discussion?
Counselor Boyajin, you had said, you had still questions that you wondered about being answered, could we table this to a special meeting that we call soon, so we can do a little more homework, um, to explore this, answer that question, and then vote?
No, I don't have any que, I was wondering if any other counselor had questions, I said I could do this, you know, two weeks from now, or do it today, I'm, I'm good.
But then you wondered about the timing. Yeah, you know, what, what the urgency was.
We need to pretty much do it sooner rather than later after the fiscal year. We issue our tax bills, we have to set our tax rate, and those are going to have to have a September 30 due date on them, so, um, I'm ready to vote now.
Good. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Nay.
Counselor Hearn?
Nay.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. We will work with the CRA to schedule, and the Secretary of State to schedule the, um, outdoor FTM at the Free Field. Uh, thank you, everyone, this was a, a long and robust discussion, that's, that's what we wanted, um, didn't come to a consensus unfortunately, but there is no good option in this case. We are still on that topic though, and I, I'd ask that the, uh, proposed motion, um, be, uh, the proposed charter change that I made be discussed later. Part of the reason I, I wanted to put this in is because I didn't know if there was any real viability to a virtual FTM. We've been holding these certainly, and they've been successful, uh, but at the time that I suggested that and put it on the agenda, I didn't know if that was, uh, you know, I, you can always find a, a software seller who'll tell you that they can do anything, uh, but hearing that they've been doing it for shareholder meetings does change my view on it. The question though is, should we have some emergency alternative, whatever it is, uh, to our FTM? Or do we think that we'll be able to hold it virtually as a last resort, um, in, in the future if, if things change? In fact, we may have to revisit this if there is a spike and, and the governor rescinds her order, um, but, um, the question is whether we need to look at a charter change to provide for an emergency alternative. Would anyone like to be heard on that? Counselor Boyajin?
Yeah, I think we, um, we need to explore, um, what options we can have in place. I don't think any of us ever thought the cause of something like this would be a pandemic, right? And, um, we're in a catch-22 where we can't amend our charter without voters either going to the polls or getting together at a Financial Town Meeting, and we can't do away with the Financial Town Meeting until everyone gets together, and we're being told not to get together. And it's just a set of circumstances that I don't think anyone, uh, came up with the Financial Town Meeting, as much as I admire it, and I think it's a good thing, and I know there's disagreement, um, I don't think anyone ever thought, you know, our inability to be in the same room together would be a real concern. So, I think we need to find a way, it's funny to be in a town like Barrington that's in such good financial shape, saying, you know, we might actually bump up against a problem just because we all can't sit down and do something, and that just seems silly to me. The next risk might not be a pandemic, I have no idea what it is, but I never would have guessed this. So, I, I think we ought to adopt something that's a safety valve, that gives, uh, the townspeople assurances that their elected representatives still don't decide on the budget, but that in the right set of circumstances, they can take the steps necessary to have some continuity of operation until it's safe to do what we normally do. I think it's worthwhile.
Would anyone else from the public like to be heard? I'm not seeing any hands. Anyone from the council? I propose this language, um, it is not set in stone, and I am not, um, there's no pride in authorship, I, I just believe that we did need a, a safety valve, um, if we were stuck with, with no real option. The fact that we can, uh, it sounds like we can hold a, a virtual FTM, um, consistent with our existing charter, doesn't leave us without an option right now, but I still can't imagine all the things that you mentioned. Is this any better? Is this any better?
Perfect.
Okay. Uh, in, in any case, I just thought, as, as you said, Steve, that it, it makes sense to have some kind of safety valve, for those circumstances, we can't understand. I, I thought that, uh, the idea of having the council do it if there was a state of emergency might be viewed as some, as some kind of, uh, power grab of, or something like that, and so, it was suggested that we limit it to a 2%. In that case, and that seems perfectly reasonable, in that case, you might be saying, well, we've got to put off these capital expenditures because we're in such an emergency, but we can still, we won't have to lay off firefighters and police officers and, and people in town, we can still get through this crisis with 2%, uh, if, if that is, um, if that's available to us. Counselor Breyer, did you want to be heard? Please.
Yeah, I was, um, I had been looking for where, um, this is written, I haven't, I haven't seen the proposed change, and I don't know if...
the proposed change, and I don't know if I'm just scrolling over it or if I'm clicking the wrong thing.
I think Mike Orsillo sent it as an email late, later today. I apologize that it wasn't done sooner.
Oh, okay. Let me check my email.
I didn't get it either.
No. Mike, Mike, I actually sent it to you with comments. I did not send it on to anyone else.
Okay. I apologize, a little confusion there. Let me just forward it on. I expected there to be more discussion, this would explain why there hasn't been.
But Mike, since I'm not sure how I'm going to access it because I'm not technically, I don't know how I'm going to get that, it means that pretty much there are going to be a lot of people in this meeting that will not have that access, so I'm not sure that we can continue to discuss it.
Mary, what is the very latest we could go with the charter change?
Muted.
Your next meeting is July 27th. I really wanted to finish the changes to the charter so I could get them out because that's, that's too late to get them to the Secretary of State because you have to have the Board of Canvassers look at them too, so.
What, by the way, does the Board of Canvassers do with them?
They just certify the questions for the ballot. They don't change what you propose, they just need to meet and certify the ballot questions.
Okay.
So Mary, if we had a special meeting next week?
Yeah.
Would that still give you enough time?
Yeah.
I don't know if the council is willing to do that, but we can't wait till the end of July, but we could do it in the next couple of weeks.
Yes, you could. Yes, you could.
One of the issues, in addition to this, I had wanted to call for a special meeting of the Town Council to make a statement on racism and violence in our country, and I was hoping to persuade all of you to have a special meeting in the next week or so. So if you're willing to do that, we could hold this and have two topics of discussion, that statement and the proposed charter change. Everyone will have plenty of time with it. Does that, that agreeable to everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll ask Mary to poll everybody for available dates on that, and we will table this for now. Mike, do we need to take, make a motion to table this?
No, you can just add it to, once you choose a date, as long as it's 48 hours in advance, it can just be added to the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion on the FTM. This is a hard thing and I appreciate all the input, and I know we all do. The next item on our agenda is item 21, and this is a public hearing to discuss an act on our community aggregation plan, and I want to just make sure that our, we have our person from Good Energy here. There he is, Patrick is here.
Sorry to interrupt, but I have to recuse myself on this one.
Okay. So this is a, the community aggregation plan, to just refresh everybody's memories, is based on a new law. It will allow the Town of Barrington to use its purchasing power for all of our residents, and those who aren't interested can certainly opt out of it, but it would also provide alternative levels of participation. What does that mean? It means that you still get your electricity delivered by National Grid. National Grid is effectively UPS, but you would be potentially changing your, your Amazon or whoever is selling you the stuff. And the electricity that you would receive would have varying levels of green to it. Using the purchasing power of the town, there are typically savings even if you go greener, even if you choose, and each resident would be able to say, I want to opt out, I don't want to do this, I want to stay with whoever I'm using to buy energy. They would have the ability to choose, I think we're talking about three options. One of them would be to do the minimum, which is the state minimum, and then you would have other options to say, even up to 100% green energy, that is renewables, and you, and we would be able to do that as a town, so hopefully we'd get lower prices. So I'm going to open the public meeting, but before we get comment, I would ask Patrick Roach to introduce himself and tell us a little about this, or should I have Phil? Would it be better to have you do this, Phil?
I think Patrick or Jamie Rhodes is also here from Good Energy.
Sorry, Jamie, I met, I remember Patrick from our Energy and Resilience Committee meeting, so, gentlemen, please.
Sure. I'll just jump in, Patrick, sorry. Counselor Alina Carroll and the rest of the council, thanks again. My name is Jamie Rhodes, I'm the Sales Manager for Good Energy and our Rhode Island Attorney as well, and I've had the pleasure of being in front of you a couple of times up to this point, so this is a chance for us to check in again and let you know where we are at in this process, as well as to have this public hearing to inform the draft aggregation plan that we've worked with the Resilience Committee on, as well as with the staff. So just as a, as a refresher, and once again, thank you for the overview of the program. We've come before the council a couple of times at this point. We have been, Good Energy has been working with four communities thus far, Barrington, South Kingstown, Central Falls, and the City of Providence. And just as a quick update, the City of Central Falls was the first town to approve an aggregation plan a couple of weeks ago. We're still preparing it to get in front of the Public Utilities Commission and negotiating with National Grid to make sure that the aggregation plan is reviewed smoothly and that we work out as many hurdles before we get into that period as possible. And what we have before the council tonight is a similar aggregation plan to what Central Falls has developed, just tailored to the feedback we've gotten from the community thus far, as well as the particular government structure that Barrington has versus Central Falls. And then hot on the heels, the City of Providence, we are, we're doing a similar outreach work that we do with the Resilience Committee with the, with various Providence groups, and we just had a meeting this morning with their policy and legal staff with an anticipation of them doing a similar public meeting towards the end of this month and hopefully approving their plan in July. So we're all moving forward at a general same pace with the, with the intended hope of being able to go out to bid as a collective of communities in order to, once again, not just leverage the purchasing power of all Barrington residents, but also the residents of three other communities. And there's still a chance of a couple more communities getting involved. I know there've been a lot of conversations, in particular with Newport, to move forward as well. So with that, we've, we've been able to post a draft version of the aggregation plan, both in the local paper, it's been available on the website, and we have received some comments that I'm going to let Patrick go through, and kind of the changes that we're proposing to the plan based off of the feedback we've seen, we have received, and then also to allow for there to be public comment tonight, for there to potentially be further, for there to be further comment and potential revisions of the plan before the town officially approves it. So, okay, we're happy to answer questions that might be out there tonight, as well as just take feedback that folks would have, and make sure that it gets incorporated to the plan before the council does a final approval. So I hand it over to Patrick to talk about the, some of the substance and the conversations with the Resilience Committee. You're still on mute though, Patrick.
Thank you, Jamie. So, yes, we met with the Resilience and Energy Committee twice over the course of the spring to talk about two of the most kind of important parts of the aggregation plan, the first being what the different electricity products are that will be in the plan, and then what the education and outreach plan will be. So on education and outreach, when we go out to bid and we get an electricity contract, then there starts a period, it's a sort of about a two-month period of pretty intense public outreach and education because we want to let all of the residents and businesses who are eligible for the program know what is going to be happening, what their options are, and one of the biggest things is to let them know how, if they want to not participate in the program, how they can elect to opt out before the program even starts. So we got the committee's input on a lot of different channels to reach community members in Barrington. Everything's from direct mailing, social media, events that may be virtual or in-person, connecting with local groups, all of that sort of thing. And then on the product options, what the committee recommended is that there will be a standard product, and this is the product that if you do nothing, you will be enrolled into automatically, and then there are a few optional products. So the standard product, the language in the plan that the committee recommended says that the goal of the standard product is to have parity or some savings with, compared to National Grid's supply, electricity supply, and to increase the renewable energy percentage, which we think we could increase about 10 percentage points on top of the state minimum. The state minimum next year will be 17 and 1/2%, so adding 10% to that would, would get you to say 27 and 1/2%. So that's the goal of the standard product, is it's both, it's greener and savings. And then there is, there are two products where you can have even more renewable energy, one that would bring you up to 50%, one that would bring you up to 100%, and that's great for people who want to do more and just at different price points, the 50% will be a little bit cheaper than the 100%. And then there's also a basic option, which as Counselor said, just meets the state's minimum standard for renewable energy, and so that would be the choice that someone who wants sort of the maximum potential savings would, would look to do. So we think the program has a place for everyone based on the suggestions and the options of the committee. And in the couple of weeks that we had the draft plan posted, we got just a couple pieces of input, and one of them was some follow-up from the committee about, but just to ask for clarification on when this education and outreach program is launched, what our role as a consultant is. We had some language in there that suggested that it was the municipality that would be doing and funding all of these activities, but that is actually a role of the consultant, so whether it's the mailers or producing flyers or giving presentations, that's, that's our role. So we made a change to just the language to reflect that we would be, we would be doing that, and then we realized that there was a nice clarification we could make in a few other places by replacing the word municipality with the program, meaning the aggregation program, and that, and there are many things that we, we do as part of the program, and then there, the plan outlines the different actors in the program, like the Town Council has certain roles and responsibilities, the Town Manager does, and so does the aggregation consultant. So that was great feedback to help us just sharpen the wording in the plan a little bit, and that, I believe, I believe Phil Hervey sent a redlined version that just had, had those changes in it. So I think I might leave it there, and then we could take, take questions and obviously public comment.
May I ask a question?
Please.
I know that I asked you at a council meeting, or it may have been to Jamie. There are many households in Barrington now that have an agreement because we have solar panels, but we have an agreement with National Grid because of having solar panels, and it was my understanding that we could still be a part of this program and continue our relationship with National Grid. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The, this-
You're over there now.
My square jumped, I don't, I don't know how to manage it. So yes, this is Jamie. Yes, just to clarify, both in this agreement, or no, this agreement, in this document and the, and the plan itself as it goes with the PUC makes clear that this in no way impacts changes or other way affects agreements that solar generators, residential solar generation folks have, that what will, the only thing that changes in this would be that for any additional electricity that you do purchase, because either you're, you didn't generate enough because it was really cloudy that day, or for whatever the other purpose, the electricity that you do purchase will come from a different supplier at a different rate than what you currently have. But as far as the agreements for you to sell the electricity through the Renewable Energy Growth Program, or if you have a net metering program, that still stays the same. That agreement with grid for those either credits or in fact payments still happens. And in fact, we got a point of clarification from the Public Utilities Commission is that there's actually an additional benefit because even though your supply would be coming, especially in a net metering program, even though your supply would be coming from somebody else, you are given credits at National Grid's rate. So for every kilowatt hour you generate, you are given credit at National Grid's supply rate, even though what you would have paid for it is actually, what you would have had for it was, is your actual supply rate is lower. So there's a little, an additional opportunity for savings in there that way.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I should also acknowledge the hard work of the Resilience and Energy Committee, and we have the Chair Lynn Carter with us at the meeting. I'm not putting him on the spot, Lynn, if you want to say something, please feel free. Otherwise, I'm, I'm open to anyone from the public who would like to ask a question or be heard on this. I'm not seeing anyone, did I just hear someone? Okay. Does anyone from the council have any questions or concerns about the plan? Counselor Breyer?
Lynn Carter's hand is raised.
Okay. Sorry, Lynn, please go ahead.
Mute me. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the acknowledgement, and it's been wonderful working with Patrick and Jamie. They've answered every question that I've had, and I have had some very picky questions. So I'm delighted with all of that, and I'm one of the solar people too, so I was happy to hear all of this too. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else from, anyone else from the public want to be heard? Counselor Breyer, did you want to be heard, or was it just acknowledging Lynn?
Well, that was just acknowledging Lynn, but I do have something to say now. I think it's a, it's a really terrific plan. I think when we first heard about this last fall, it seemed like a really great opportunity, both can save folks money and it increases energy from renewable sources to, you know, the degrees that people are comfortable with, but even, you know, even if people don't, don't choose to upgrade, it can still save money. But I was, I was surprised to hear that there was the public hearing tonight only because I didn't, I hadn't heard about this in a couple of months, and I know it's been with the Resilience and Energy Committee, but I wondered how we promoted this, because I think this is something that people will be excited about, but maybe have opinions wanting to better understand the implications of it, because it does have kind of a- wanting to to better understand the implications of it, because it does have kind of a somewhat long-term contract, something that that folks aren't used to. And so I was just wondering what what we did to encourage folks to to come here and provide the feedback that we requested.
Great question. This is, I should say, this is not the, there's a number of additional steps along the way, and part of the whole process and part of the plan will be a serious outreach to everyone in town. In terms of, everybody, I think, gets a a mailer, they do all kinds of things. Jamie and Patrick, could you take us through what the step tonight and then the remaining steps after that are?
Sure, yeah. Maybe I could start, and Jamie can jump in. So so tonight, we would, with with the public hearing, if there are no substantive comments, the council would have the option of approving the plan. And that would move us to the next phase, where we could seek to get the plan approved by the state's Public Utilities Commission, and that would ensure that it meets all the the requirements of the state statute. And once that is approved, then the town is in a position to go out to bid for electricity. And one of the kind of great things about this program is you're you're never under any obligation to sort of proceed and implement the program. So once the Public Utilities Commission made their approval, we would work with you to identify when's a good time to go out to bid, and then, and we'd be coming in front of the council to 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 advise you and have you make that decision. And then, then there would be a bid day, and if the pricing doesn't meet the expectations and the kind of the guidelines that that the council sets, then you don't have to move forward, and we can go and hold off and look for a future date to to go out to bid. But once we do go out to bid and find a supply electricity contract that that meets your goals, then we kick off this this big education and outreach portion, which is outlined in attachment to the plan, where we are really trying to use lots of different diverse mediums to to make people aware of the program and their their options, and and how they can participate or not. And one of the nice things about it that we will also be highlighting a lot is that you can always leave the program at any time without penalty. So even if, even if you sort of miss the this sort of, you know, two-month kind of education and outreach window, that you can still get out of it at at any time. It's not a, not a long-term commitment for any one individual or or business. And so, yeah, so that that's when it really kind of ramps up going into that that piece. And I think, yeah, Jamie, is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, two pieces. First is that when the Public Utilities Commission reviews a plan, they will also hold a public hearing on the plan. It's both required, as well as the PUC's general operating procedure to do that, and they are going to hold another public hearing hosted by them, most likely in Barrington, if they are doing in-person meetings as well, or it'll be a similar virtual meeting. I don't know exactly how the procedure works. So there will be another opportunity for a public hearing on this plan. And then, to get back to the beginning of the question, before this meeting, the outreach that was done is, in addition to the resilience committee work that that we have done, is that the plan was posted both on the city's website, as well as notices put in local papers saying, hey, this is available, and please come and comment on it.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard on this?
Hi, Mike, can I say something?
Sure.
Jan Strong, Jan Strong. So I'm a little confused. On one hand, I I heard earlier in the conversation that you have, you're in unless you opt out, but this gentleman just said something that that made me think I didn't quite understand that properly. Can you, can you confirm that it is, in fact, you're in automatically unless you opt out?
Hi, yes, this is Patrick. I'll confirm you are in unless you opt out.
So my only concern with that is we just spent, we spent almost two hours talking about the Financial Town Meeting and how we didn't want to disenfranchise the elderly in terms of not being able to utilize the technology to participate in the Financial Town. And to me, this is sort of the same thing. There are going to be a lot of elderly that won't understand that. I mean, I I grant you that you're going to to have the community education process, but is there something particular that you'll do to reach out to that, and I'm not talking about elderly, that 65 to 75. They're pretty savvy with technology these days. I'm talking about the 75, or I don't want to insult anybody, let's say 85 plus, you know, that really don't quite get it.
Yeah. Patrick, I have both the answer at the same time. So I'll tell you about our past practice, and obviously with COVID-19, there's definitely going to be some reimagining how we do this. One of, when we have launched these programs throughout Massachusetts, we have made a priority of visiting nursing homes in particular, as well as assisted living facilities, and to do public, have one of their events there to be, hey, bring your electricity bill, there's this program coming in place, and we will be there, and we will walk people through with their electricity bill. We recognize that we probably are not in any position to be going in person to one of these facilities, and so our intention is to still deliver the information as best as we can to intermediaries, to folks that are there, and to be able to answer questions. I I don't exactly know what that's going to look like at this point, depending, obviously, on what access we're able to have available to directly answer questions, whether that's by mail, by email, by having somebody on site there be trained and able to do that. So once again, that's just the answer of how we've done in the past, is like, we really make a priority to 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 go to those folks, especially because they've been the target of predatory practices by some competitive suppliers that will offer an introductory rate and then change it on them, and they'll never see it. And we really want to make sure we deliver the message to them that this program is not a situation where you're just saving. It's a program that's been vetted by the city or by the town. It's gone through this hearing process, and so that mailings that come to include notes of like the city or the town seal, and that this has been approved by the city council or the town council, just to be sure, like, there, there is, there has been a level of vetting that has happened to this, and you can trust this mailing that's coming before you, if not just a marketing pitch for it. But actually, how do we directly communicate to those individuals? I am all ears, and the plan, the outreach plan that we have here is not the only things that we can do. As we move forward into that period, we are both open to learning and from hearing about what other entities and outreach work has done, because we definitely don't have all the answers. I've got no qualms about saying that, but we do need to figure out how to make sure the information's available to them.
I appreciate that.
Looking for anyone else from the public who want to be heard?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Barrington's Community Choice Aggregation Plan for submission to the Public Utility Commission for final approval.
And seconded by Counselor Breyer. Vice President Weymouth, let me vote.
Aye.
Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Hearn.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries with one recusal. Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your patience in waiting and for all your hard work. Thank you, Lynn and and Phil and your team and Kim. You've got a long way to go, but this is going to be a great program for us. It'll save us some money, and it'll really help reduce our carbon footprint too, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is item 22, which is to discuss and act on the release of remaining unused contingency funds. And Phil, will you take us through that, please?
Well, this is, this is request to move, close out basically the contingency from the roof project at the PEC Center and move it into the lower-level renovation projects at the PEC Center. The good news is that after all, there's only a couple of change orders that had any cost implications at the PEC Center for the roof. One was adding some dentals along the top, the eaves that were missing, and also factoring the fact that they did not use all of the allowance for replacing rotten wood decking on in the underneath the shingles and the flat part, flat roof part. So we actually ended up with a credit back from Apollo Roofing of $983.75, and leaving a contingency and from the roof of $30,983.75. This was, this is really needed for the lower-level renovation project, because that that contingency was already pretty tight when we awarded the bid, when the council awarded the bid a few months ago. And in the memo, you can see some cost implications that we're facing right now, and this would give us some breathing room to address some of the pending change orders that are really needed, including a couple structural, one structural issue, and also maybe free up some money to add some other things in that were deleted. So hopefully, the, you know, the council will agree to release this contingency and assign it to the renovation project.
Kate, if I can add that the, if we do not use it on structural, the number one item is the commercial dishwasher in the senior center.
Any members of the council that have questions? Counselor Breyer.
Yes. I, I think the answer came in, in what you were saying, Phil, but I was wondering, in looking at some of those items, what this funding would allow for, but it sounds like we'd be moving it really from one project's contingency to another project's contingency. Is that accurate? That it doesn't necessarily enable something new, but it it might, as we get further down the line?
More of adding back in things that were removed because of the cost implications, and also addressing some issues that came up as they demoed and found some, found some items that need to get addressed.
How is the the project progressing now in terms of timeline for when Tappan can reopen Senior Center and the museum?
I think if Alan's here, he's been more involved in the in the site meetings. He might have a better feel for that, but I do know they're encountering some delays and getting some items like doors because of the order, the manufacturers are slumming it like it's hard to get these items, some items that otherwise would be readily available.
Yeah, that that's correct, Phil. They've been progressing pretty well, but due to the pandemic, there's been a slow up on getting materials, and that's held up things a little bit. But they're progressing as best they can, and they're trying to shuffle other other projects, other phases of the project along the best they can until they get the products in.
Any other questions, members of the council? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to reallocate the remaining $30,983.75 balance in the PEC Center Roof Replacement Project to the PEC Center Lower Level Renovation.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Then we'll have discussion. Counselor Hearn, are you seconding or questioning?
I'm happy to second.
Okay. Most of you are seconded by Counselor Hearn, and further discussion. Do you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyadje.
Aye.
Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Hearn.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. Some good news. The next item on our agenda is to discuss and act, this is item 23, discuss and act on authorizing an additional $55,500 for contract with Fussin' O'Neill for additional engineering services related to that grant we received, the Walker Farm Resilience and Recreation Improvement Project. $11,000 to cover the local share of the engineering fees. Phil, will you take us through that, or is that Kim?
It's me. I had to read it off my phone. I can't load up the memo. Hold on a second. It's going to be hard to read it. Hang on a second. Well, basically, this is adding in the entirety of the engineering that's required for the project. The council previously awarded $27,000 to do preliminary engineering, including surveying the the site. Okay, it came up. And since the council made that award, the town has learned that we did receive the grant funding from DEM for the recreational component of it. Initial work was, when the initial work was approved, all we knew was that we had the resiliency grants to do the shoreline restoration projects and other associated work. So this, with the, with the DEM recreation grant, plus the CRMC shoreline restoration, shoreline habitat restoration grant, we have additional funding that is enabling us to do all of the environmental work, plus the recreational improvements that are proposed at the site. And the, the proposal from Fussin' O'Neill would add $55,500 to the scope to complete everything that's required, including CRMC permitting, bids, bid specs, plans, and reviewing the bids, and some, and some construction oversight. The towns match, most of that would be coming from grant account, the grants that we're that we're receiving, or proposing it to provide the match, the local match would entail $10,000 from recreational field maintenance account, and $1,375,000 from the climate mitigation reserve, climate mitigation capital reserve account. So I don't know if I made any sense, but-
So, so the total amount, of that total amount, $44,125, comes from the grant, and then the the balance would come from our differing accounts. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Vice President Weymouth, please.
I feel like I'm a Girl Scout again. I, I just want to make one request. Under the Fussin' O'Neill letter, in which it says, "Task Two: Deliverables. Prepare a draft set of documents for the town's review and comment, incorporate minor comments into a final design development plan set." I'm just making the request that those documents be sent to the Conservation Commission for review and their opinion. Please.
Okay. Phil, can can you take care of that?
And Resilience and Energy Committee has also reviewed, had a had a review of as well, previously.
Okay. But they, are you saying that they, the Conservation Commission hasn't reviewed it yet?
No, I want to see the, for the Task Two deliverables.
Right.
Those haven't happened yet, right?
Right, Phil?
Sorry, you paused for a minute. I couldn't quite hear what your question was.
Okay, so the Task Two deliverables?
Right.
Kate is asking, those haven't happened, and can we have those sent to Conservation for their, the Conservation Commission for their review?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. I just want to ensure that that happens.
I think Arnold from Fussin' O'Neill is in here. So, yep, there he is, I see him. So he's, he heard the comment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Counselor Boyadje.
Two questions. One is, on the Task Two materials, could you send those to Parks and Rec and Harbor as well? Because I know Harbor, when I was at least liaison, had a lot of discussion about this, work at Walker Farm. The other thing is, do we, can you give us, maybe Kathy knows, a balance on the recreational field maintenance, and a balance on the Parks and Trail maintenance? field maintenance and a balance on the Parks and Trail maintenance?
I'm gonna try to get out of the screen and look it up right now and get that to you.
Kathy, I have an email from Ross on that.
Do you have one?
Yeah, I do. Give me a minute. Rec Field Maintenance Account has almost $400,000. I did not ask him about the Parks and Rec. Climate Resilience has about $23,000. And also, he gave me the environmental issues reserve account, that's $163,000.
My recollection from our budget discussion was Parks and Trails was substantially lower, so.
That's, I think that's less than $10,000. That's getting pretty low.
Right.
Last I recall.
Yeah, I mean, I would only say, it doesn't need to hold up our vote tonight, but if you're going to propose taking things out of Parks and Trails or recreational field, you should probably send that over to Parks and Rec for their review and recommendation. Because ultimately, they might come up with a project and say, where's the money that we were allocated? But we don't need to hold it up over that.
Steve, looking at Kathy's financial statement that ends April 30th, there's still $30,000 in Parks and Trails.
Okay. So better out of field anyway, but you know, just going forward, I think they might want to have some input into that.
Right. Anyone else on the council? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to allocate $55,500 from the DEM grant to Fussin O'Neil of Providence, Rhode Island for completion of the engineering and construction cost oversight. Funds would be allocated as follows: $44,125 from the grant, $10,000 from the recreation field maintenance capital reserve account, and $1,375 from the climate mitigation capital reserve account.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin.
Aye.
Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Hearn.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That's gonna be a great project and we're fortunate to have the grants to do it. The next item on our agenda is item 24, to discuss an act on amendments to our fee and fine schedule. We're now in the position that we have electric vehicle charging stations, and the question is, how much do we charge for the charge? So Jim, where do we stand on the, or Phil, where do we stand on the, are they already installed?
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say Police Cove is installed as well as Town Hall. We asphalted the parking spaces in front of the meters of Town Hall today, so they should be open within a couple of weeks.
Now, so these are two different kinds, just to refresh everybody's recollection. At the, I'm sorry. At Police Cove, we installed the Level 2, and those are slower chargers. The thinking was that if someone is gonna use Police Cove as a park and ride, they can plug their electric vehicle in there for the day and then when they come home from work, unplug it. So it's a slower charger. But at the Town Hall, it's a fast charger. And so according to the memo, it looks like these charging sessions typically take about 25 minutes. So there will be two different fee rates for those. Does anyone have questions, concerns about the fee rates? I guess I'm just wondering, Phil, how do we come to these numbers?
They're recommended based on what the going rates are for charge points, charging stations. I had to ask them about the Level 3 station itself because they're pretty rare, and 30 cents per minute is what they recommend for that. That came from charge points, own recommendation.
Questions from the council?
Oh, I'm sorry. Should I talk up to someone?
Go ahead.
Wait, Joey, did you want to? How are we gonna go about metering that and charging it? Is that a credit card at the station or how's that done?
Yeah, they pay electronically and it's deposited directly to the town.
Okay.
It's already, the council's already been set up with Police Cove and it will be set up for the Town Hall one.
When you say pay electronically, is that like, you know, they, with an app or is it right at the, like a credit card insert here?
I wish I could tell you exactly, but I think you can pay with an app.
Whatever it is, we don't have to write out receipts or anything.
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have one of those cards.
I remember the brief that we were given, it's an app that you use, at least for the short-term charges.
Okay.
Go to Town Hall and buy some credits.
Right. We didn't want Mary to have to keep running out there and. Worth giving. $2.12, you know?
It's actually a full-service station, so Mary will be cleaning windshield.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to amend the fee and fine schedule to add EV charging fees of $1 per hour for the Level 2 chargers at Police Cove Park and 30 cents per minute for the Level 3 chargers at Town Hall.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin.
Aye.
Counselor Breyer.
Aye.
Counselor Hearn.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on amendments to the fee and fine schedule. This is for a certificate of occupancy inspection fee, not relating to the building permit. $75 for the certificate of occupancy. And Jim, who's gonna tell us about this? It would be you or Phil?
Yeah, I can brief. This was recommended by the new building official, based on his experience in the previous municipality where he worked. He was surprised that we did not have a fee for situations where he's called in to do a certificate of occupancy in cases where there is no building permit, so those are free inspections. And then he suggested that we research other towns, and we did. Based on our research, $75 to $100 is kind of a typical, it sounds like that's kind of a typical permit fee for this kind of inspection fee. So that's, we came up with a $75 recommendation.
And under what circumstances would we not have a building permit but have a request for a certificate of occupancy?
My understanding is something like where's a commercial establishment that's permitted by right and it's been vacant for a while and they have to reopen, that kind of thing. I don't know if Jerry might have an idea, but that might be the situation where there's no permit that's required because they didn't have to do anything that required a permit, but they did require a certificate of occupancy, a certificate of occupancy where they could open up.
I have a question then. The businesses that have been closed because of the shutdown would not be required to...
There exists the same existing business, they're just not open. I don't think that's, they said they already have their certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Mary, please.
I just want to clarify, how about, Phil, how about when Dennis has to inspect like for a liquor license? That doesn't count because they're not looking for a certificate of occupancy. I just want to make sure.
Right.
Of that. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Hearn, please.
Does every community charge one of these? I mean, and how many do we have a year? Is this a thing?
It sounds like it's enough to draw his attention. I don't, I don't have the numbers exactly, the administrative assistant did the research, how many charge the fee, but it sounds like it's a pretty common fee and it was $75 to $100 range. I don't have, I don't have the exact numbers. I'd have to try to reach them.
Thanks.
If Caroline's in the meeting, if she's listening, she may know those numbers off the top of her head. Caroline, can you hear us?
She was here.
I can hear you. What numbers are you looking for specifically?
How many certificates of occupancy do we issue every year or how often for where there's no building permit involved?
I would say between maybe one and three a year. It would be as often as a new business would be leaving a space and a new business would be coming into that space. He checks.
For example, Monjo is moving out and a bakery's moving in. That would be an example where it would require a new certificate of occupancy, but not necessarily a building permit.
Correct. Yes, I don't believe he's doing many renovations, so that would be a perfect situation where Dennis will go out and do an inspection, but there will be no permit pulled.
And do you know what, did you take a look at what other communities are doing in order to come to this number? And what communities, if you can recall?
We did research quite a while ago, I would say probably last fall. We called other communities in the East Bay area and then others around Providence. I can't recall the exact communities I did call, but I did call five or six, and it was within that range.
Okay.
So we're on the low end?
Correct.
Of the, of the fee? Okay.
Counselor Hearn, please.
My one hesitation with this fee is that we're trying to get businesses into town. If there's, I mean, it's one to three a year. It seems to be, this could be our one little gift to a new business coming into town. I mean, for 75 bucks, the hassle factor just seems to be not worth it. That would be my two cents.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on the council?
I was just thinking the same thing as Joy, that, you know, this is a brand-new business opening up in town and it's just one more fee, but with the numbers where they are, it doesn't make a difference on the budget. You know, the high end being like maybe $500 a year, but it could be something that a new business owner just, you know, puts a sour taste in their mouth.
Counselor Boyajin.
Yeah, my thinking, you know, I really don't want to get into the business of charging fees for the sake of the revenue, so I don't really measure it by, you know, is it making a material difference in our budget? Because nothing ever will in relation to property taxes. But is it really that much of an imposition on the inspector, I guess is the question? And if it is, let's charge the fee. If it's not, I tend to agree, what are we doing? And how much goes into one of these?
Phil, do you have the answer to that?
I'd have to get Dennis to explain it to you. I'd have to get more information for you.
Yeah, I guess, I think it makes a lot of sense that it'd be nice to be able to publicize the fact that we've been doing this for free. We do hear people talk about Barrington not being business-friendly, but there are a lot of ways in which we are very business-friendly and if all the other communities in the East Bay are charging this, maybe we should send them a bill that says free or something so that we can get the credit for it at the same time. I'm inclined to agree with Joy and Jacob that you don't think we need the, to do, particularly where it's only, you know, three times a year or so, I think it's probably worthwhile to send that message of welcome to the community. Just so long as they know they're getting it for free and they wouldn't somewhere else. Does anyone still want to make a motion under those circumstances? Okay. Doesn't want to make that motion. Mike, we don't need to make a motion to reject it, do we?
No, you're fine taking no action on it.
Okay. I appreciate the research, but one of the things we're trying to do is just to find ways to send that message to businesses, "We'd love you to come to town." There's no easy way for us to raise revenue in our town because it's so reliant on residential property taxes. The more businesses we can get in, the more we can spread that burden around. Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on summer claims and programming in the town of Barrington in the age of COVID. So, Jim, can you take?
So, yeah, I'll kick this off and I'll let Michelle jump in. The state in its phase two of the COVID-19 reopening placed restrictions on summer camp that are pretty difficult. It requires you to have stable cohorts of no more than 15, including counselors. The groups must stay in the same space every day, their indoor space. Barriers between groups have to be as tall as the tallest camper. Cohorts must be at least 14 feet apart. They have to follow CDC guidance for cleaning and sanitizing. They have to have screening protocols for every camper and staff person as they report every day, to include temperature checks. There needs to be a quarantine space for any camper that's exhibiting symptoms during the course of the day. Face coverings and physical distancing for the duration of the workday for all the employees. Face coverings for the campers if tolerable. Visitors only special, under special circumstances with additional protocols. You need to keep a visitor's log of anybody that comes into the camp. You have to have separate entrances, drop-off and pickup protocols, as well as separate entrances for the different cohorts, or stagger the times that they arrive. And you have to limit the use of shared equipment, not only amongst groups, but amongst the cohort. So our typical camp endeavor and cool kids camp, which are the two lodge camps we run usually out of the middle school, are for ages six to eight and nine to 12. In the past, we've had up to 200 campers in the course of a summer. We took a look at how we could operate this and with the cohorts being established, we have 13 campers in each cohort with two workers in each cohort, two counselors in each cohort, for one four-week session that would run through the month of July, July 7th through July 31st. And there are activities, we try and keep them outdoors as much as possible because it's a healthy environment. But we set up a special basketball net out in the back of Town Hall and take them on some field trips, walking field trips down to the water feature at Police Cove Park, perhaps have a beach day once a week. But trying to run a camp with 200 kids or camps with 200 children just is impossible to do. Matter of fact, most municipalities have canceled their camps for the summer. We think that we can do a small camp this year to allow those parents that really need to get their kids into camp, but it's gonna be a total of 26 children for the camp endeavor and camp cool kids camp. Now, all the camps that we're offering is the theater camp, which would be up to 13 children, and that runs, once again, four weeks from July 7th to July 31st. And also, we're working on setting up the youth tennis camp, which typically runs in two-week sessions for various age groups. The course in the camp endeavor and the cool kids camp, as well as the theater camp, would be the same as last year, which is $600 per camper for the four-week session, which I'm told is about a good rate. which I'm told is about a good rate as you're going to get. And then the, the cost for the tennis camp, for the five to six-year-olds would be a hundred and fifty dollars per two-week session. For the seven to twelves, it would be, um, three hundred dollars per session. And for the thirteen to eighteen, three hundred dollars per session. Those two last groups, uh, have longer sessions. The, that's why it's more expensive. In addition, with the camp endeavor and the cool kids camp, because of the requirements set down by the Department of Health, we have to file a plan with them that gets approved by them. We're going to have, uh, Gene Bell be the camp director because we feel we need an adult, uh, an older adult in there. No offense to Gene, but a mature adult in there to oversee because of the protocols that need to be put in place. In addition, um, the, the sanitation requirements are extreme. And so we've got a, a worker, a part-time worker from the senior center that has been over here at town hall helping us do some deep cleaning. And he would be assigned over to the camps. The, the two camps, Camp Cool and Camp, Cool Kids Camp and Camp Endeavor would be run out of the gallery at the library, with each cohort on one side of the ceiling to floor partition. And like we said, we try and keep them outdoors as much as possible, but, um, there, there'd be some strict cleaning and protocol requirements. So we're still kind of setting up, but, um, we've cleared it with the library director and, um, we're, we're set to go. And so I think that's about as good as we can do under the cir- restrictions that are being placed on us. Michelle, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think you did.
Um, and is there, is there any funding, uh, from the state that we might be able to get for, um, related to COVID-19? Because some of these costs are obviously connected to that.
We are told that there, there may be some. There's, there's a fund that the governor set aside for youth employment directly related to COVID-19. So we, the, the, the applications haven't come out yet, but there's a good possibility that we may be able to, uh, get back some of the funding for this.
Questions from the council?
Uh, quick question. Parks and Rec has a meeting on Thursday. Any chance someone could be prepared to fill them in on this? If they can get it on their agenda before seven?
Sure, I can put it on the agenda.
That'd be great, Michelle. Thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Brier.
Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you for, for putting a plan together. I know the, the initial thought was that we wouldn't be able to do it given the, um, very onerous regulations that the state put in. But I think it's going to be really important for a lot of families in town who have had kids at home for, for months, looking to get out and, and do something fun. And to be able to give, you know, even if the limited number of kids who are able to participate, that option, um, I think is, is really great. I had one question.
Jacob, thanks to your gentle pressure for this to happen. You came very close to being named director of the camp, but we chose Gene instead.
I've, uh, I've been a camp counselor for a few years, so it's, it's been a while. But, um, I was just wondering with enrollment caps, um, where they are, I didn't, I don't know what enrollment has been like in previous years and whether we're, um, I don't know what, you know, are we likely to have, you know, dozens of, of kids who are normally campers who aren't able to just because we, we have to limit it for safety reasons? Or will this be kind of around the ballpark of, of the enrollment we usually have? I was just curious about that.
Yeah, the camp endeavor and cool kid, cool kids camp will be significantly lower population than in years past. And quite frankly, it's, it's just a matter of trying to find physical space where you can fulfill all those protocols.
Quick question. How are we going to propose to tell people they didn't get in?
Well, well, all of the registration this year will be online. So there will be a waiting list and people will know right away whether they got into the camp or they ended up on the waiting list.
But how, I mean, is it first come, first served? I, I just, the reason I ask that, like, I remember when, what was it? Was it, uh, all-day kindergarten where we used to have a lottery? Like, let's say spending tax dollars that get allocated by lottery. Right? And you sort of say, is that, is that fair? Cutting the number of enrollments? I'm just kind of concerned that, how are we selecting them? And how are people going to be told, you know, that you didn't, you didn't make it?
Michelle, you're muted. Michelle, you're muted.
Okay, here we go. It will be first come, first served because the web, we're going to be doing all of this online. I can't have people coming into the office with paper registration forms and trying to do a lottery on this. If we do it online, much as we, we're doing the beach passes and we did the kayaks and boat sales, uh, we'll be able to, people will know instantaneously that they got in. We will notify everybody of what time the registration opens for each camp. And we will stagger it so that we can handle any issues that might arise with the, with any registration.
All right. Can you make sure that's not during work hours?
Well, um, I can, you want me to do it at night?
Just, I, I worry to say the people who might need it most have to work. And if we say it's first come, first, first during work hours, we're, we're sort of penalizing the people who can't spend the time at work getting into a first come, first served for a camp that they need to take care of their kids while they work.
Okay, and I, I can appreciate that. On the other end, if there's nobody in the office to answer questions and someone runs into a problem, they'll just be out of luck and there'll be nobody to help them through the process.
We can do it on Monday.
Do it on a Monday when we're open till eight?
I can't do all of the registrations for all of the camps on Monday. I'm working with a person who's helping me to set this up online because the town of Barrington has never done online registrations. So this is not an easy process. As a result, I cannot possibly open all four camps and just open registration at the exact same time and everybody's trying to register for different camps.
We can do it two at a time and maybe do successive Mondays. I'm just, I'm, I'm really concerned that we're opening a program for such a small number of kids, excluding a number of kids who probably for a number of years have been enrolled in. And Parks and Rec hasn't talked about whether or not, you know, that's something we ought to be offering or whether they would have a problem with it. I think generally we want to be of the mind, look, if the town offers something, it's available to everybody. And if we, if we can't make it available to people, we don't offer it.
Okay, I can do that. I can open it on successive Mondays, but that's going to take us really close to the start of camp. Camp is only about three weeks away and I will need to, I don't know if this can be ready to go by next Monday. We're working on a shortened timeframe to try to get all of this online registration to be available to people. So I can do that, but if we will, we will run very close to the start of camp.
No, I think that, I appreciate about that. And I'm not saying that we're making your job easy. I know this is terrible circumstances. But if people don't know whether or not they got in, then they won't have made other plans that they might need to make. Which I think goes back to the original point, which is if people can't count on a slot, right, they're going to be surprised too late to get into something else. You know, with the expectation, which has always sort of been, well, there's, there's kind of room, you know? Maybe some kids don't get in, but maybe most kids. Now I think we're flipping that upside down, saying, people probably should not expect to get in based on historical enrollment numbers. And it's going to be like more.
Right. That's probably true. People should not expect to get in because there's only thirteen spots where typically we've run a camp for two hundred children. I don't know what to do about, I mean, I.
It, it's just not ideal circumstances, but I, I mean, do, do your best. You, you understand my concern, so.
I'll, I'll see what we can do about the registration being in the evening.
Thank you.
Rather than a first come, first served basis, if we could have a period of a few days when people can express that they want to enroll and then have, uh, whether it's a lottery, some sort of randomized selection, and then people register online following that. But then it's not a, you know, you were a few minutes too late and now you can't register for camp. I think, I think that's an option that doesn't drag it out over a period of, of successive weeks.
I suppose, wait a minute.
There are other situations, um, in town that are first come, first served, such as Walker Farm, uh, the gardens at Walker Farm. And there were only like twelve of them. People had to, and I think still do, have to wait in line in front of the town hall to get, uh, one that has emptied. And at the community garden, there are sixty plots and we try to advertise the, the, uh, opening, but, you know, first come, first served is unfortunately, I think, you know, necessary in a lot of situations rather than this, rather than a lottery.
It certainly has been a standard, for, for example, at Barrington Beach for boats. It's always been first come, first served.
And I, and I don't disagree that, that it works for a lot of things. You know, a garden plot, boat storage. But for example, all charter schools are by lottery. And I think when you start talking about that someone's going to rely on this as childcare, their inability to be there at a particular moment is, is, it, it's of great significance, right? I mean, this is, this is very inexpensive childcare essentially that we're offering. But we're offering it to such a small subset of people that it's almost like, you know, the town is running a program that's all on purpose, it's private, not public. And that, that makes first come, first served, I think, complicated. The people who rely on this are the people who can not have the flexibility to be there at a given moment.
Is the why also offering any kind of camp, camps this summer?
I don't know about that.
I, I talked to the director last week and they're still trying to figure out camps for the same reason we're limiting ours. They, they're probably trying to figure out how to open the pools as well. But they weren't sure at this point whether they're going to be able to operate summer camps this year.
Maybe, maybe we can just, if I can make the suggestion, Parks and Rec is meeting on Thursday. Maybe they can mull over and try to figure out the mechanics of an enrollment. You know, I, another example, Primrose Hill has a pre-K program. You know, it's a lottery. It's not a first come, first served. Um, and I think you're going to have serious frustration when you have a first come, first served where it's like one out of twenty people gets it. Right? No one, no one is concerned about, you know, it's first come, first served and ninety percent of the people got here earlier than you. This is really, it's backwards. You know, very few people are going to get enrolled here. And that leaves a lot of people with a bad taste in their mouth, I think. And at least a lottery, you say, look, everyone had an equal shot. You have a deadline for putting your name in the lottery. But, you know, I think Parks and Rec has seen some blowback about field times and things like that. They might be equipped to sort of have the discussion and say, look, what are we willing to live with in terms of, you know, resident frustration over the lack of space in these programs?
What if we were to hold this? I'm sorry, Counselor Hearn, did you want to be heard? No, okay. Uh, what if we were to, to hold this until the, our meeting next week? See if Parks and Rec can look into this? Is that what you're asking, Steve?
Well, I don't think we need to hold up, you know, the fact that we're going to do a program. I just think it's going to be in the enrollment. I mean, there's obviously a ton of complication that goes into the execution. You know, in terms of the sanitation and God bless you guys for addressing all those things. I think the enrollment is where we're going to run into, you know, people being upset. I don't think it's a reason not to do it. It's just, let's put all, you know, tell Parks and Rec, put as much thought into this as you can. Make it as palatable as you can, knowing that, you know, it's going to be a ten percent kind of success rate for residents and, um, that they should be, you know, expecting that.
So, um, I will be attending the Parks and Rec. I'm hosting the meeting because it's a Zoom meeting. And Michelle will be there as well. We'll, we'll add it to the agenda for discussion. And based on that discussion, I'll, I'll ask Michelle to make a decision as to what she thinks the best, what their recommendation is and what's the best course forward.
Great, thank you.
Do we? Do we need to make a motion on this? I don't think we do.
I don't think so.
Yeah, this is just, uh, for discussion. Thank you for your hard work in doing this. Do appreciate it. And the next item is to discuss and act on bids. And the, the one bid is for a new server for the police department. Chief, are you around to help with that?
Oh, yeah, I'm here. Uh, this is for the police and fire, uh, for public safety. The current server we have has been patched up a couple of times in the past. It's over fi- I don't know, five or six years old according to our IT expert. Both top, uh, both of our departments rely on this critical, uh, you know, EMS information that's in there, uh, HIPAA information, as well as all the police, uh, last thirty years of what's in our software as well. So this is just something to try to keep up with, uh, critical need of having a server so we don't crash at any point in the, uh, future. All our police and fire databases rely on this and user files.
Okay.
I don't know.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Brier?
Uh, I know that, um, within the past year or so, or few years, town hall, like all the HR and personnel data and everything like that was moved to the cloud. And over the past two years, I think there have been instances where that's been a really good savior. There was one hack and another issue where having our data in the cloud securely was helpful. I don't know if that's been looked into for public safety, whether there are obstacles to doing that, um, because of the nature of the information or work. Uh, but I was just curious if, if that was evaluated.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was. I wish I could, uh, I mean, I'm not an expert in this, as you know. And, uh, that is one of an options we've looked at in the past. But, uh, I, I think half the time I call the town hall, they're always down. The cloud's always down, so we've done very well with, uh, what we've had in the past. We've never had any, uh, crack, uh, any of those, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Any of those issues that some of the other towns have had with, uh, being held hostage, malware.
You have a, you have a computer contractor that you don't use Think Tech like we do. You, you have the separate one because he's law enforcement and he handles the law enforcement. It's his reputation to serve or base the cloud?
Yes, his is, and, uh, he not only, he, he's actually on board. He works for the school department. We got him way back, uh, might, might have been fifteen years now, maybe twenty years. I can't remember. And we worked with the school department quite often and that's how we found him. He's a town resident and, uh, he's actually, his capabilities are unbelievable uh, from what I've seen compared to others. And, uh, I don't, you know, I, I could have him, I thought about having him come on as well. Explain it a lot better than I can, but, and our backup server, he's, has since moved to the, uh, I believe it's going to be at the middle school or the high school. Right now, I think we're at the high school for our backup server. We've got it offsite.
I, I remember having a conversation with John, Chief Lacrosse, and there was, there was a reason why, and I can't remember why, they wouldn't go. was a reason why, and I can't remember why, they wouldn't go to the cloud, and it had something to do with the law enforcement files or something. So what I might ask the council to do, we need a new server. If you could approve this contingent upon our investigation, and if it turns out that the cloud is an option, a viable option, then we will, we will not purchase this server and we'll be back to you about the cloud next month. But our concern right now is this server crashing. And if we go to, if our professional, our expert tells us that this is the way you need to go, I'd like to proceed sooner rather than later.
Okay, any members of the council? Vice President Weymouth, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the allocation of $16,549.72 for replacement of the Barrington Police Department computer server if necessary.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Counselor Breyer. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyager?
I was going to say, despite the dozen emails I've gotten today asking me to T fund the police department.
Okay, Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
And this was for police and fire. I know I said it, but I just want to stress that for both departments. I know Fire Chief's probably on board too, I'm sure he's still here.
So this next item was something that I, that I saw in President Obama's nationwide town hall, he had a virtual town hall, and he urged us to, cities and towns, to look into something called Eight Can't Wait. Now, I'll ask Chief to just address that, but there were eight specific concerns that a number of activists had seen as issues that the police should deal with in terms of force. The website also had an opportunity for mayors to take the pledge, which is to commit to addressing these concerns in the Eight Can't Wait and to meeting with the community and so forth. We don't have a mayoral system, we act as a council. So I just wanted to, and I actually don't know if we could all sign on to it and sign up for it, but we can't, we can't individually decide how the whole council will, will act. So I wanted to get your input and see if we could all agree on these as aspirational goals that we would commit to working towards. This is the council, Counselor Breyer?
Yeah, I think these are terrific goals. I think what, what we heard earlier from the chief was very, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but, but it gives me a really good sense, I've always had a good sense, I think we all do, of our police department, the training they go through, but also hearing him talk about the lengths they go to with recruitment. I think that, that doing our part to ensure that we continue to build on that is terrific and these are, these are good goals because it's about looking at what it is we have in town that's, you know, the policies, getting community feedback, which I'm always a fan of, and then, you know, making any reforms that we find from that. And, yeah, I'm, I'm all on board with this.
Great. Counselor Hearn, please.
I think it's an incredible pledge, and I, I think our police chief has done a great job. I read your article that you wrote back in 95 and you're completely spot on. I think it would make a strong, strong push for all of us individually as council members to take this pledge. I mean, I think we're all out in the community in different areas, we have a broad reach, and I think it speaks volumes to kind of the, the passion that our council comes with to be able to say, this is a pledge we take individually and collectively. So I would just ask that we all individually take this pledge as well as the town manager and our council president.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea, and I think we can do that. I just didn't go all the way through it to confirm that we could all do it, but I, again, I wanted to make sure that we voted collectively as, as we decide these things.
President Carroll, just a thought, we've received a number of letters today and as other municipalities have, basically requesting the defunding of the police department. And so I think we should take this opportunity and this pledge to show as a group our commitment. So what I might suggest is when we have our next meeting, since we can meet in groups of 15 or less, that we do it at town hall with our face masks on and use it as a media moment for, you know, a picture with the on-duty police officers and the council making a commitment to this pledge. And I think that might go a long way in communicating to our community how we feel about this pledge and our police force.
That sounds, that sounds like a great idea to me. Vice President Weymouth?
I, I have a couple of comments. I'm absolutely in support of Jim's idea. It's my understanding though, that to take the pledge, you're involved in the review, the engage, review of the police use of force policies, the engaging of various communities in town, developing a report, and creating the reform, reformed policies. It's not just that we support the eight that can't wait. And that is a little more problematic. I mean, we can certainly sign up to support this activity or this investigation or study, but I'm not sure how the five of us can accomplish the, the actual pledge. That's one comment, and the other comment is, is, is one that, I don't, I don't know, I found it surprising, reading the eight points that can't wait, that they were presented in such a assuming negative way, that they're, they're presented from the outset as a failure. And I just bring your attention to that, that it, I would prefer to have that turned around to somehow reinforce, say, the first one is failing, failing to require officers to de-escalate situations. Why isn't it presented in a more positive or forward way by saying, you know, we as a council or we as a task force want to require officers to de-escalate? Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, I do, and what I, not to steal your thunder, Chief, but I asked about these. And the good news is, we're eight for eight. We do all these things already. So our use of force policies are, that is clearly not a universal set of use of force policies around the nation. And I think it speaks to the professionalism of our, of our chief and of our police force that we are already doing these things, which is not to say that we can't learn some things. And I think when we're faced with events like we've seen, the, it can be from a town to be offensive and to deny that there's any problem, or it can be an opportunity for self-examination. I think that this ought to be an opportunity for us to really listen. There may be stories that are on here as we hold a listening session in the coming weeks and maybe a month or so, but I think it's, it's important that we hear this. I think it will benefit all of us. I certainly think that we've started to do good work by just having Chief lay out all of, as Jacob said, and I think the word you might have been looking for was reassured, because I felt very reassured myself in hearing all of those things. And I think that's, that's, as I said, the beginning of the discussion. But I, I think we can turn those around and say Barrington does this, Barrington does this, Barrington Police Department does this. And, and I think there are certainly areas where we can improve, we just need to sort of find them. Counselor Breyer?
If I can add, Kate, the pledge is the My Brother's Keeper Alliance pledge, which is separate from Eight Can't Wait. The pledge is, is that we will look at these things, talk to the community and make needed changes. It's not a pledge to, to subscribe to specific changes in advance.
It's not the review, engage, report, reform?
That is the pledge.
That is the pledge, but that requires, especially engage, it means that we, somebody needs to work on outreach involving community members.
I'm, I'm going to propose that we hold a listening session. Counselor Boyager?
I would, I would wager that I am the only town council person to have been the victim of a use of force by the Barrington Police Department. You can tell me if I'm wrong about that. I want to say a few things about it, and that is that first, I think that it's unfortunate that because of what is a necessary reaction to really, I mean, absolute criminal conduct by certain police officers, that it gets, you know, the conversation takes over and it becomes about police. And I want to say, first of all, from the time that I had my encounter with the police 20-something years ago, since then, they have, when every same officer was involved in criminal conduct, they immediately called the state police, saying, this is a job for the state police, he's one of our own. They pulled over and, I don't know, state politicians who were driving intoxicated through town. Like, right, I mean, we have a police department, the level of professionalism is really nothing I would have expected from where it was when I grew up here. I think that's owing to Chief LaCrosse and now you, Chief. So when we talk about these things, I think it's really important that the community, and I'm saying this because of the emails I've gotten today, that said funding should be zero. That, this be very clear, we're here to congratulate you on extraordinary success and look for ways to make sure that we never have the incidents that we've seen, right? I mean, it's not about accusing our police force. I wrote back to one person today saying we need to defund the, I said, when there's a domestic violence complaint, who does that wife call? Right? I mean, it's just, the reaction to this needs to be certainly serious, beyond serious, right? We should be examining all these things. But Kate, to your point, I read that as being more an accusation, and in some cities, I think it's completely warranted, right? But frankly, think that our, our police force is, is very professional, very good at their job, and, I mean, I, I don't spend time at the station to see what's going on, but I imagine there'd be hell to pay for crossing lines that don't even approach the kind of brutality we see other places. So I think we should do this, I think we should push ahead. I think we need to make clear to the dozen or so people who have already emailed me saying that the police deserve no funding in the town of Barrington, that, that we rely on them, that they do a great job, and all we're trying to do is just make sure that, you know, as elected representatives, we're accountable to the people and the police are accountable to us. Seriously, but it's not, it's not a lich on. You know, and I think that, that needs to be laid out as we do this, because otherwise I think you really jeopardize your relationship with your police force, like the bad guys in a community where right now they probably don't feel like the bad guys. That's all.
Thank you. I do think that it's unfortunate, and, and I, I don't, I mean, you heard Chief at the outset of the meeting say that, speaking for all of his officers, that they, they were very upset by what they saw, and the result of that kind of thing taking place in Minneapolis, or the result of some of the actions taking place in Washington DC, those things tend to affect the initial reaction of people to our police. I know, for example, that there was a small, a small demonstration taking place, not, not the one that we went to yesterday, but a small demonstration at the corner of County Road and Maple Avenue. And the, I know that the, the supervising officer on that shift went over to the folks and I'm sure there was hesitation at why this police officer is approaching and asked, do you guys need anything? And, and probably just disarmed them with that kind of friendliness. And I, I do remember talking with Chief LaCrosse years ago when I first came on about how they were moving away from that, used to be this command voice kind of thing that you always get a police officer if you, in every circumstance, it was, if every, if you're a hammer, every problem looks like a nail. And so they would use the same force, but as Chief talked about, there are de-escalation procedures, there's ways of dealing with, especially mentally ill people, you've got a, you've got a totally different response to, to folks depending on certain things. So I think part, a big part of this, a big part of this will be conveying to people who have concerns that although your concerns are entirely valid, we can assure you, as Counselor Breyer and myself are reassured by hearing this. I think it will also be an opportunity to examine ourselves and see, are there areas we can do better? And professionals aren't afraid of that, and I know that Chief is not afraid of that, and I, I hope that he understands that he has, he and his officers have the support of our council and the confidence. But in the times that we live in, I, I do think we agree that we need to go forward with this. Counselor Breyer, did you have a question?
I itch, the itch.
Okay.
I just, I just want to say a couple of quick things, Mike, because I have a bunch of emails from people with questions, and now that I've seen the Eight Can't Wait, some of them refer that he ate, like, does your department have this and so on? And, and I look at them, the unfortunate part is a lot of, I don't know who came up with them, but some of the civilian population get a little mixed up with some of the wording. So I have someone here that asked, like, they'll use the word excessive force. Excessive force is not legitimate to us, but lethal force is what we use, and I think they use the terminology and mistaken that. But what we did was we took about 20 questions here and I had a couple of my accreditation managers go through them and actually answer them. I'm going to post them on our website because I'm sure they're questions, they seem to be, these are 20 excellent questions that we answered and actually pulled excerpts from our policies in the answers. And, and just, I just wanted to use one because I'm reading, these are very vague from a law enforcement standpoint, it may seem a little different to, to you, you know? from a law enforcement standpoint, it may seem a little different to, to you, you know? So like the first one, ban chokeholds and strangleholds? We do, but I just want to, I'll give you an excerpt for an answer to that, they asked that, see if I can find it here. So in response, in response to that question, here's an excerpt from our use of force policy. Techniques intended or designed to cut off blood flow or oxygen to the brain will not be used unless lethal force is authorized. So I don't know if that makes any sense, but yes, we ban it, but there is a possibility. I mean, if you're legitimately involved in a situation where your, your life or someone else's life is in danger, then it can be used. Does that clear that up, or?
Yeah, I think, I think people will need to, I mean, they're going to be, in some ways, they're going to be uncomfortable situations because, discussions, because people don't want to think about those things, but you're not talking about restraint, you're not talking about using that as a form of restraint for anyone, or certainly after they were restrained. You're instead talking about a lethal force situation, which is not going, and I don't know what circumstances is lethal force authorized. And I imagine a police officer in a fight for his or her life.
Right. But it is, it will not be used, it definitely says that. So that's what I say, we have these eight, but you always have that, you know, that lethal, if, unless lethal force is authorized, you know, all bets are off.
Right.
And that's the difference. And that's not what you, we saw in that video, we all, you know, that was just, like I said, leaves you speechless. So it, it's easier, you know, it's pretty easy to say, do we have a required warning before shooting? I explained to town manager Cunha the other day, we absolutely do. As a matter of fact, we're going to yell, stop police, warn police before we fire, because we practice it over and over at the range. And when they say when you're under high stress, you revert back to your training. So we're going to say it without even knowing we're saying it. But you may have that instance where you arrive at a scene, somebody has already shot and killed two people, and you have a sight on that person, well, you can't warn that person, you're going to jeopardize the lives of the next person he's ready to kill. So there's always that one, you know, I don't know if I'm being clear, but we do have these eight, but there's always a, there's always a, you know, lethal force, if lethal force is justified at that moment, then these eight are out in some, in some cases. I don't know if that makes sense, but I just wanted to ensure I cleared it up, because everybody was saying we already have these, but, and we do.
So I think, Kate, please.
I just want to make one final comment. 16 years ago, when I decided to run for this office, I sat down with a group of neighbors and friends and put two lists together, what was really great about Barrington and what was not so great, so that we could, I could support what is great and look to how to improve what's not so great. And at the top of my list for why I loved this town was not that it was, you know, the best school system, which most people tend to say, it was because this is a safe community to live in. And I just, I just wanted the chief to know that.
Both chiefs?
Yes, both chiefs.
So I will make a motion to authorize the Barrington Town Council and the town manager to sign the pledge committing to action that is on the President Obama's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, further discussion? Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyager?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, it's unanimous. I think I sent a link, so I would ask that everybody, when you get a chance, if you can go to that link and sign up. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on ordinances. The first one is introducing ordinance 2020-12, an ordinance amendment to repeal Chapter 170 Tobacco. This is in light of the Supreme Court decision and subsequent events which have made it Do I hear a motion to introduce 2020-12, an ordinance amendment to repeal Chapter 170 Tobacco, and set a public hearing for Monday, July 27, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
It's made and seconded, Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyager?
Well, it's an ugly win, but it's a win, so aye.
Counselor Breyer? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, which is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63 alcoholic beverages, increasing the number of BBL licenses from three to four. I'm opening the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this topic? I'm not seeing anyone, anyone on the phone want to be heard on this topic. Okay, seeing no one from the public, does anyone want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve a BBL license for Spaghetti Lane LLC at 8 Anoka Avenue, Barrington, Rhode Island.
Actually, this is a motion to adopt 2029. Got ahead of ourselves.
Oh gee, okay. I'll make a motion to adopt 2020-9, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63 alcoholic beverages, BBL three to four.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyager?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is the renewal of our declaration of emergency. I am opening the public hearing on this. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this topic? Okay, seeing no one on the council. Counselor Breyer?
I had had a couple of things. One was, I spoke earlier with the solicitor about, again, the, the way it's structured kind of in, it's not really a negative context, but how we're vesting all authority except. And I talked about wanting to delineate what authority we are vesting, rather than all except for. And we talked about the, the struggle with doing that, because there are many different instances, you know, small items that, that could come up. And one of the examples was, was curfews, and it's written in the manager's memo. And I, I just want to be sure that, that this emergency declaration isn't, isn't used to, to provide authority for anything outside of the public health crisis. Because it does, you know, now as it goes on further, it does vest more, more authority than would normally be, and we, we want to be sure that as many of our policies and processes that can function as normal continue to do so.
So your specific question is, could this be used for anything outside of the public health emergency? Is that correct?
Yeah, and then if it can, how would we ensure that it not be?
Doesn't, I'm sorry, doesn't this just piggyback on the governor's emergency declaration, which is all, it's only about public, public health? Tied into the?
I mean, we could certainly add something that says to address the ongoing COVID-19 emergency, which would limit the manager's actions, can take any and all actions deemed necessary to address the ongoing COVID-19 emergency, or pandemic emergency, or something like that, and that would limit it to the health crisis. Jim, you were muted.
Yeah, I was saying, it already does that. In second paragraph, it says relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and circumstances have become, well, it says it's related to the COVID-19 pandemic in paragraph two.
Right, but if there's any question, I mean, if it, if Counselor Breyer would feel more comfortable adding the word in the second, the last paragraph, first sentence to the town manager, take any and all actions deemed necessary to address the ongoing health crisis or health emergency, or something like that.
Oh yeah, I guess, even if the "the" was changed to a "this," because we refer to the ongoing emergency in prior paragraph, this ongoing emergency. It's just when I saw, when I saw curfew written in the memo, it just, I, I thought that's got the, the curfew is something that some municipalities implemented as a result of protest concerns, and it's, it's not related to this emergency. I don't know, I mean, responding to serious concerns in an agile way is certainly important, but if that authority is, is brought from this emergency declaration, it just doesn't seem like the right process.
This is Mike Ursoel speaking. I, I do believe that adding the word, changing the word "the" to "this" will address exactly that issue. It will restrict the manager's powers to things related only to the pandemic.
And what that means is that if there were to be an emergency situation, we could call an emergency meeting of the town council. The reason that we don't simply do that for everything in the COVID-19 is because there are so many actions to be taken, it does require agility. If we found that there was public safety in a different area, we might declare a separate emergency, and we might determine to delegate additional powers, but we could certainly do that with an emergency hearing, provided he could, we were all in town when, when that happened, or at least the quorum was. Are we comfortable with changing it "the" to "this"?
We just have to be around internet access.
That's true. Vice President Weymouth, are you comfortable changing the "the" to "this"?
Yes.
Counselor Hearn? Okay. So with that change, Counselor Breyer, are you comfortable with the?
So there's one, one other, and that would be changing the duration from August 3rd to July 3rd. I know our next regularly scheduled council meeting isn't until the end of July, but the, the two months duration seems long. We've been doing this one month at a time, and I think, given the, the nature of how things change and the important nature of this, I think, especially now that we have a special meeting that we're planning, if we can push that special meeting out two or three weeks instead of just next week, it still has it, still has us deciding on the ballot issues, plenty of time in advance, but gives us some additional time to renew this declaration of emergency if needed, rather than carrying it forward for two months.
Comments from the council? The members? Vice President Weymouth?
I, I just see that the next, we're going to be doing this again at the next meeting. I, I, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't see why we can't go to, for that length of time.
So just to be, just, maybe this is, you're fully aware of this, but we can terminate this at any time. We need, what is it, 48 hours notice? We need to file an ordinance terminating, and then, we need to introduce that ordinance, Mike, or no?
No, you can, you can terminate this at any time.
Okay. So, you know, we can do it in an emergency session if it's, if it's justified by an emergency, but we could certainly do it with, with, you know, a special meeting if circumstances arise. I don't know if you were aware of that.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that specifically. It's more that each time we renew this, we have an opportunity to talk about the executive orders that are in place currently, and kind of what's, what's on the horizon. And there's one element, the only other item I had for this was a question about something that's, that's newly added to the executive order, but I'll, I'll wait till Jim's back. But the, so, so that was the reason, knowing that we could terminate it if, if needed is, is helpful. So if others aren't in favor of changing the date, then I'm not going to make that a sticking point.
Okay. Okay, so with the one change to, I don't know, Mary, if you're following that, address this ongoing emergency. Are we ready to vote on this?
Well, sorry, so now that Jim's back, I, I did have a question about the executive order, and that was the addition of the no door-to-door solicitation. And I was curious as to what informed that decision, because especially with this being an election year, I know nobody likes door-to-door solicitation, but candidates are still going to have to collect 50 signatures, and they're still going to want to be able to talk to folks. I've never, in, in my neighborhood, had an issue with actual door-to-door salespeople coming around. So I just wonder if, if there was much that's informed that decision, I'd like to, to hear about it.
I, I believe it's listed, it's somewhere in the governor's, but it came up in a conversation with the chief of police and myself. And it's, it was about the pandemic, and, you know, whether we wanted people going up and knocking on doors, they have to get licensed in some cases, and whether we should be issuing licenses for people to go door-to-door under the current pandemic. And it seemed appropriate to me that banning door-to-door solicitation is, is appropriate under the circumstances with some of the actions that we've taken.
is appropriate under the circumstances with some of the actions that we've taken. Um, I do know that, uh, Mary has been in conversations with Secretary of State's office and, um, you know, how they're gonna handle collection of signatures and that type of thing, and I know they're working towards avoiding door-to-door. Is that correct, Mary?
I believe that, yeah, I believe that's true.
Uh, any other members of the council wanna be heard on that? Are we ready to vote? Yep. Uh, I'm sorry, did I, I may have already asked this, it's a long night, did anyone from the public wanna be heard on this? Got news. Seeing no one, closing the public hearing. Um, and with the motion to renew, to adopt 2020-11, renewal of declaration of emergency as amended, to, uh, change the word "the" to "this." That's the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Boyajin?
Aye.
Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
I also vote aye, the motion carries unanimously. I, we, we've got the, things ahead of us, but I just wanna take this opportunity to point out to anyone who's, um, who's still on with us, since March, Jim Cunha has not had a day off. He has been at the town hall seven days a week. He's been working incredible hours, uh, and he, he's truly been going above and beyond the call of duty. All of us, uh, I've heard the, the expression, uh, COVID fatigue, which is, I understand means something else, but all of us are fatigued by, um, you know, the hard work that, that this hap- that we've all gone through, but Jim has been working especially hard, so I wanna thank you for all your hard work, uh, and we're not quite out of the woods yet, but, um, um, still really appreciate it. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, next item on the agenda, discuss an act on a BV limited liquor license, uh, unless anyone wants to be heard on that. Um, uh, do I hear a motion to approve a BBL license for Spaghetti Lane LLC of 8 Anoka Avenue, Barrington, Rhode Island?
So moved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Counselor Hearn. Um, Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
I also vote aye, the motion carries unanimously. Looking forward to a great Italian restaurant. Um, next item on our agenda is to set the agenda for our Monday, July 27, 2020 town council meeting, uh, to be held at the Zoom. Um, we have one item that is on there to repeal the Chapter 170 tobacco ordinance. We will hold the meeting at some point before that, hopefully next week, to address two issues. One, just the statement of the town council on, on the, um, the situation and the repercussions involving, uh, George Floyd, uh, and also to discuss a potential charter change to put on the ballot. At our 20, July 27 meeting, does anyone wanna have anything else heard? Counselor Breyer?
Um, so I had a, a couple things, uh, well, yeah, two, two things. One is, um, we, for a couple months now, included in the plan for the next council meeting, a, a discussion on, so that in the minutes, it's listed as a proactive discussion initiated by Ken Block's comment, um, regarding what resources are available to provide some relief, um, for tax burden, given the financial crisis. Um, so if we're able to get it into next month's meeting, um, I'd like to, to have that discussion and, and learn what options we have available for folks. Um, I know now it's not necessarily a, a proactive discussion, but at least to be able to understand how we can, um, help folks who are in trouble. Um, the other item is something I'm starting to look into as a policy initiative relating to, um, rental properties and possible affordable properties, without getting into too much of it, 'cause it's not on tonight's agenda. Um, I spoke about it with the solicitor, and he didn't have readily available information to share, and suggested that it would take a direction of the council to kind of authorize him to spend time on it, so I just wanna have the discussion about what I'm thinking there. Um, I don't know, um, Mr. Ursoel, can you kinda, I, I don't wanna say too much, but if you could explain kind of what you need, so what should be on the agenda for, for next month's event?
J- Jacob, I think it's, I'm as simple as placing on the agenda an item to discuss an act relative to, um, affordable housing, um, and, um, you know, appliances that are required in affordable housing units. I, I think that captures it, right?
Okay, yeah, that would work.
Okay. Anything else? Of course, if anything comes up during the, uh, during the month, then please feel free to let me know.
Um, Mike, we wanna talk about, um, and I'm always getting the name wrong, the property, uh, I'm sorry? Ross? Yep.
Seabrook?
Thank you.
Okay.
Are we on a ride-along with the chief?
I know. That's what I was wondering.
Looks fun. Chief. Next, uh, item on our agenda...
I don't know if the chief knows his computer is on.
I think he does.
I think he does.
Yeah, I'm on the, uh, I'm on my cell. I'm on my cell, and I'm just leaving the station, so I figured I'd keep the meeting going.
Okay. As long as you knew what was going on, okay.
Yeah, I walked, that's why I had a mask on, I was, left my outfit, I had to wear a mask.
Uh, do I hear a motion to move into, and this could take me a little while, so bear with, executive session in accordance with Rhode Island general law, 42465A6, prospective business, Vine Harmony, formerly known as Zion, 42465A2, collective bargaining memo of understanding the United Steelworkers, 14845, 42465A2, litigation pending tax appeal, Stansler versus Menardi. We need to read the, uh, the civil action numbers?
No. No, that's not necessary.
Drumstick Road Trust, 2018 versus Menardi, Cantor versus Menardi, Gordon versus Menardi, Zoo versus Menardi, Wong versus Menardi, and Cove Haven Corp. versus Menardi. Uh, and Fogarty versus Menardi. And to discuss executive session minutes from March 2 for placement on the town council agenda for Monday, July 27, 2020. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Vice President Weymouth and seconded by Counselor Boyajin. Vice President Weymouth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Boyajin?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Hearn?
Aye.
I also vote aye. So folks who are, are, are on the Zoom meeting, uh, tell me if I'm wrong about this, we're going to go into executive session, we come back after executive session. Uh, in, in six years, I, I think I have never seen anyone stay that long, except Mike Davis. Um, but, um, if you are, certainly welcome to stay on the Zoom call, and we will resume this Zoom call, uh, once we finish our executive session. Typically, it's just to say whether to move, move the meeting, so there won't be anything further. You're welcome to stay on.
Mike, if I could just for a moment, um, Caroline Joyce has been monitoring the meeting all night for us, so thank her, I'd like to thank her for that, but she's going to ma- maintain this meeting as we all jump to our other meeting, and, uh, Caroline, we'll be back in a little bit.
We waiting for ya.
Thank you all. Is here. Okay, uh, Kate, would you like to make a motion to, uh, move out of executive session and seal the minutes? Is that right, Mike?
That's correct.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Take a seconds, and I think we can do all in favor on this, 'cause it's only us, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the minutes will reflect that no motions were made during the executive session.
Okay. And Kate, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I sure would.
Okay. And I don't think we need a second. Uh, Andy's always told me we don't need a second for that.
You, you actually don't.
Yeah. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
All right, I wish you...
Good night.
Be a soon. Bye. Bye.